Welcome to the Board of Education's December 5th, 2022 work session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Butler.
Let allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see Commissioner Jay is joining us tonight, so I'd like to welcome him. Do we have any other elected officials here? Okay. Seeing none, we have one announcement. Board members, TSBA has scheduled the Legislative and Legal Institute for February 16th and 17th in Nashville. If you haven't let Terry know yet, please let her know as soon as possible if you would like to attend. Also, for those, before we get started, for those in attendance tonight, I want to remind everyone that the Board of Education's public meetings are the only opportunity we have to discuss items that come before us as an elected body. So, we ask that if you do want to have conversations with each other, that you would step outside of the room to do so, because it makes it more difficult for us to hear, and also refrain from any cheering or booing or groaning or whatnot, just because it does make it difficult to hear. With that being said, do we have any changes to this agenda?
So, we have a motion by Ms. Horn and a second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Rieswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to use these new mics. I need to adjust them, but I guess we don't have to, so. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I want to apologize on the front side. This update's a little lengthy, so just so you know, and I'm going to make sure I stick to some of my script on some of these notes, so a couple of items to cover. So, one of the best parts of my job is the chance to visit schools. I see the outstanding work of educators, staff, and students. Last week, I had the chance to go to Spring Hill and spend half the day with 4th grade teacher Jessica Beeler. It was incredible time there with her, just to be able to see her, the way she planned and the intentionality that she used in her reading classes and in her math classes. Really enjoyed that time with her. I was also very impressed with the culture of academic excellence that's been created by Tiffany Watkins, the principal there. She's a great leader, and I know she's a new principal there at that school, but I actually had teachers stop by while I was in the room just to come and tell me that. And I don't know if she was paying them, I'm kidding, no. She and Mr. Spikes both had stopped by a couple of times and just really could feel that in the school, and so just very thankful that they hosted and allowed me to spend the time there. It was great. So, I also want to talk about on Friday, I was excited to attend the graduation ceremony for our new school security officers. As you all know, school security, I mean, school safety is our top priority, and we still believe well-trained officers that are highly skilled are very essential to the work that we do. So, together with our law enforcement officers, these new officers will help keep our schools safe and secure. It was great to see them. If you haven't had a chance to be at one of those, it's really neat. I mean, they get to talk to them about the trainings they've had and just how proud they are, and it's neat to see families there and just to have them celebrate, so I really enjoyed that. I know we'll probably hear more about this tonight, but I want to be the first to say it was also exciting Friday night for the West High football team who won the state championship after an undefeated season, so congratulations to them. I was fortunate, I didn't even able to go to the game, but I was able to go to the send-off at West and be there and got to speak to the teams for a minute, so that was great. So, it's a tremendous championship, got to talk to the coach as well, and just know just his reputation of raising young men into, young boys into men is great. He does a wonderful job of that, so glad to see that for sure. Okay, so this next part's where it takes a little time, all right? So, I want to go into this agenda, trying to get this agenda together. We have lots of items that came across this agenda and lots of things that, so there's a few items that actually were on at one point and have been pulled off, so I want to give some information to that. The first is the background information on the Duncan &amp; Sons contract. It was originally placed on this agenda prior to tonight's meeting. I provided, if you'll look, you should have on your sheet here, some highlighted in yellow. So, this is the vacancies we currently have with our custodians by school. Dr. Adams and his team have done a great job to pull that, so sometimes it helps to have that data and see that data and looking at that. So, I say these things, one, to explain why it was pulled and to talk to you about what our plan is for January. So, prior to tonight's agenda, I provided each board member with a number of custodial vacancies by school. As you can see, we continue to have a critical shortage of custodians. Despite innovative actions like last year, you all approved a 4% raise for this, or excuse me, 8% raise for the custodians for the maintenance department. Our maintenance department has provided transportation to job sites for folks who don't live in some of those areas for those schools to get them there. It's still, at this point, we have some schools that aren't up to the cleanliness that we would expect our schools to be, and that's not a reflection on our custodians, it's a reflection on the lack of help and support that we have. So, after continuing to hear concerns from our principals through a couple ways, one, we have a principal advisory council, and that is a topic that's come on multiple times, not just this year, but also last year when we had the shortage, as well as some principals who have reached out to us individually. I actually asked Dr. Adams a couple of months ago to start exploring what can we do to supplement, to support, to make sure we have the schools the way they need to be as far as cleanliness go. So, Dr. Adams has carefully researched, worked with our law department as well, to secure a contract for, and we need a key word here, right, just so everybody knows, for supplemental services. This is not a replacement of custodians. This is not a reduction that we're not going to continue to advertise and try to recruit custodians. This is supplemental to try to help our custodians who are working lots of hours of overtime and lots of times weekends and things that Dr. Adams has been a great advocate for, saying we need to take care of our folks. I know he's met with our custodial staff multiple times this year and most recently even last week. So, with all of that said, working with our law department to secure a contract for supplemental custodial services from Duncan &amp; Sons. So, again, to Dr. Adams' credit, researched around other districts in the area, and were they happy with the supplemental service, that sort of thing, and Duncan &amp; Sons is a local provider of those services that we feel good about. So, in January, Dr. Adams will bring a plan for these supplemental services to the board, and so the question could come, well, why aren't we doing that right now? So, the extra month will allow our operations team time to have more in-depth conversations with school administrators and specific custodians, as well as to consider additional schools that may benefit for the supplemental services. Originally, when the contract was put on, we were looking at feeder patterns of Fair Get, Harden Valley, and Karnes, because those are the ones that we saw the greatest full feeder pattern deficits in. Since we've continued to pull this information, we see some others that could potentially benefit from that. And also, the conversations have been had with some of the principals and some at a high level about looking at this, as well as with custodians. Again, kudos to Dr. Adams, who's met with our custodians face-to-face and had those conversations, but we still feel like we want to make sure there are no questions and that the people have had, individuals have had conversations about that before we move forward with the plan. So, let me be clear, we value our custodians as valuable members of the KCS family. As a principal myself, they were very important members of our team. As a teacher, they were very important members of our team, they still are. So, we will not eliminate any of our current custodians, nor do we have a plan to relocate them from their current schools against their will. Sometimes custodians ask for that because it's closer to home or those kinds of things. We've been, we would do that, but we're not asking them to move in this plan. So, we see this contract as a short-term solution that will continue to fulfill our custodial openings and will continue to fulfill our custodial openings in the future. So, I would say this too, we have reached a critical issue, as you see, in that if the board has other ideas on how we might be able to do this or additional to that, I would ask in January that you all continue to bring those to the staff, and we'd be willing to bring those forward as well. But for now, again, to try to help our custodians out and try to get where we need to be, I hope we get to a place where we have so many custodians that we don't have to do this for long, but in the meantime, the cleanliness of the schools is important as well. So, I just wanted to clear any of that up as far as why that was pulled and why it'll be on in January. And then my final one, I know it's been a long time, sorry. My final one is really just to talk to the future of community schools in United Way. That was on there. So, as you may know, early this semester, the Knoxville Education Foundation worked with United Way or Greater Knoxville to discuss a plan to transition the operations of KCS Community Schools from the Knox Ed Foundations to United Way. Both boards have voted, and United Way will assume operations of the Knox County Schools' Community Schools in June of 2023, so not yet, but in the summer. After discussion between both organizations' legal teams, it was decided that it was better for United Way to bring their full plan for the future of community schools to the board for an MOU to approve later in the spring after they seek input and can capture best practices for community schools moving forward. I'm going to say something about Matt Ryerson, I'm going to ask him to come up for a second. Matt Ryerson is a great guy, is the CEO of United Way that we have in our community. I've really enjoyed getting to know him over the last couple of months, and I'm really excited just to hear the passion and vision that they have, the commitment that they have is to really assess what is working in community schools and where we need more resource, we need more support for our kids to be successful, and I think United Way will provide that in a partnership. So, I'm very supportive of that and where it's going. Initially, we had that on there because we thought there were some reasons to do that so they could begin some transition, but we feel at this time the MOU's not ready, I mean, not ready, not needed at this point, but we look forward to the plan they will bring in the spring that will move us forward for future years with detail and input on how community schools can be even better. So, with that, I'd like to offer Mr. Ryerson a chance to speak.
Thanks for the opportunity, and it's an honor to be here today. I see a lot of familiar faces and just want to thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you and really share enthusiasm. As John mentioned, we've spent the better part of a year, year and a half, really researching this community school strategy, what it would mean for Knoxville, the children and families, and really the communities and neighborhoods that it served. I do want to recognize your chair, Christie Christie, has already recognized, council member, no, Commissioner Jay, Commissioner Jay, who also happens to serve as the Chair of the Knox Education Foundation, and it's been an incredible partnership with them in transitioning that program. We continue to talk very closely with the team at Knox Education Foundation, as well as KCS staff and leadership. In fact, we did a tour today of Dogwood Elementary, which is one of the model community schools, 16 of them in total, and we're just really blown away by the team and leadership there. And United Way could not be more excited about this opportunity. It is collaborative, so as we go forward, these conversations continue to happen with the KCS team and leadership. I know the legal team has been very helpful, and our general counsel has already talked with the legal team here at KCS, and we feel like we're going to get a very strong MOU with shared roles and expectations of how do we make this a world-class community schools? We already have a terrific platform, and it's executing very well. I think the next step is how do we make even a more robust investment into that work? So, on behalf of the United Way and the United Way Board of Directors, I'm just here to say thank you, and we are anxious to serve alongside of you as we serve our community. So, John, I don't know if you have any questions or...
I do not have any questions. These are weird. I don't know, don't need to move this. We have new mics tonight, so. But I did, we did have an opportunity to have lunch the other day, and I am really excited about the transition and the vision, and just want to stress again that we're still going to have community schools, right? It's just a different organization, because I know that there were some concerns about that when initially we started talking about that, and I just really appreciate United Way and the work you've done to come forward and help us with that.
Yeah, yeah, to reconfirm that really clear, both, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Knox Education Foundation, but they are committed to ensuring community schools, and we are absolutely invested. Our board took numerous votes, unanimous and enthusiastic to take on this strategy. It is mission central to our work in the community as a whole, so we can't wait to jump into it, so we're very excited.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Ryerson, I appreciate the conversations that we've had over the last couple of months about this issue, and really appreciate how attentive United Way is in terms of studying the matter and trying to really get your hands around it, and you just mentioned the statement, kind of mission-centric. Can you just say a word about how this is mission-centric to the United Way? Because I think a lot of people who have traditional inclinations of what the United Way is might be thinking, ooh, this seems a little out of the box, so can you just say a word to that?
Yeah, I think at face value can look like a seismic shift, but the truth is, it really does align to our mission. If you think about United Way historically, United Way historically was an organization that identified community needs, raised funds to support those needs, and partnered with organizations to find solutions to address those challenges. This is very much the same, community schools is a very similar model at a micro level, right? So, at a neighborhood or school-based model. So, it's the same idea of getting that community together, listening to the needs of that community, raising resources to invest in creating partnerships and collectives to really dig down and support families, children, the schools as they walk on this journey. So, for us, it's really similar to what we've done for 100 years, more so on the neighborhood level, and for us, that's probably the best way to accomplish this, is not to be removed from those problems, but really walk alongside families, listen to their, have them guide that process, and have a voice in the outcomes of that work. So, yeah, to us, it's mission-centric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
I have a question for you. Yes? Yeah, Dr. Rieswick, sorry, I wanted to ask a question actually about the Duncan &amp; Sons thing real quick, and it's just our complete curiosity. On the last page of this, it says, "The Dream Team." What is the Dream Team? There's three of them. I mean, I want to be a part of that, that sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Ryerson. We recruited Michael Jordan, Magic Johnson, I'm kidding, no. I'm actually, I mean, I know what it is, but Dr. Adams will probably describe it better than I will, so I will let him do that.
I thank you, Dr. Rieswick. So, basically, the Dream Team, a group of individuals that go into schools that are in desperate need of help, and they do a deep cleaning.
So, they will travel around and kind of provide supplemental services needed?
That is correct, and they have their own schools, so it's just in addition to their regular responsibilities, they will go in as a team and do a deep cleaning.
So, it's...
It sounds like more than one mic is, it's too hot. So, I'll have to adjust it. Cool, thank you.
Yeah, they are fantastic, fantastic.
All right, so, moving into the next item, I believe this is also yours, Dr. Rieswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I promise I won't talk anymore after this. So, we're going to talk, as Mr. McPherson comes up, just wanted a presentation or update, playground update for the board. So, several of you have reached out to the staff or to myself since October, when we kind of sent out that initial potential cost for the playgrounds that had been brought up once before. So, as a result, I've asked our team to put together a presentation to go through different options, so what you'll see in this presentation will be some different options, how they relate to the playground. We'll have an overview of kind of the methodology of how we got to assess the needs and the cost analysis, potential funding options, Ron's done a great job and really headed that for us, and also an overview of potential trade-offs. Each funding option might occur, and just so, two things, I really feel like that's our job as the staff, is to bring you guys as much information as you need to make those decisions. But I will let you know too, because I've talked about this with our staff, my greatest concern moving forward is out years, we're in a good situation budget-wise right now with federal funds that are in and those sorts of things, but I do think, and Ron will explain some of these, there are some competing interests that I think when we look down the road, and some of these are kind of like hidden, we don't think about, and I will steal your thunder, but things like debt service, you know, that are, that roll over into our general purpose budget right now that really should be back in debt service. So, there's some things, Jim, from my view, you haven't asked for my opinion, but I'll tell you, is that there are some things we could do to kind of shore things up for the future. That doesn't mean I don't think kids should play, that doesn't mean I don't think playgrounds are important, it's just that I think there are things, in my personal opinion, I'll live with whatever, I'm not going to, you know, be supportive, but that's why you maybe haven't heard me as pushing this out as much, just want to make sure that was clear. So, with that, Mr. McPherson, turn it over to you.
But thank you, Dr. Rieswick, is there a present, can we get the presentation up maybe, and as we go through that thing, so as we go through that, John, I don't know that either one of us has ever been on the Dream Team, man. You know, we're...
Maybe nine.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So, first off, before we get into this, let me just say that the information used to, it was a team approach first off, and the information we used to be able to put this presentation together was largely derived from information as a result of what our playground inspector found, and so, okay, I may have to get, does this work?
Is it powerless?
Let me see. Let me make sure I'm doing this right. There we go. So, yeah. So, what was found is that the inspections were performed about 40%, maybe a little over 40%, 22 of our elementary schools, the playgrounds there were actually in pretty good working order, no real needs associated with that. Now, of course, that left the remaining 60%, and what do we do with that? So, our inspector divided these up into three different priorities, right? And so, the first one was Priority Three. It's about 25% of our, the playgrounds at 25% of our schools fell in this area, which generally in pretty good condition. Now, there were some repairs needed, some of the equipment, but if the schools found the money to make some of those repairs, replacement parts could be available, they could be found, so it would not be a heavy lift in order to actually find the parts to remedy the situations at those schools. Priority Two, however, it's about 15% of the elementary schools, and what was found...
Priority Two, however, it's about 15% of the elementary schools, and what was found is that there are repairs needed for some of that equipment. The downside is that for some of that equipment, some replacement parts are unavailable. And that's usually a result of maybe the playground, the vendor maybe is no longer in business, or maybe the, the equipment is too old. And so the, so replacement parts can't be found, and so you would just have to replace the whole piece of equipment. And so obviously, those schools in the second priority, the playgrounds there would be a bit more costly than what we would find in Priority Three. So Priority One, these are the areas with our most significant needs, about 20% of our schools there. And repairs are needed for this equipment. Unfortunately, replacement parts are unavailable, whether that's the equipment is just too old, the vendor is out of business, or a piece of equipment is outdated. And by the way, if I misspeak on this, I've got, I've got, the real brains here behind this would be Doug Shover and Adam Parsons, right? So if I misspeak, hopefully they'll come up here and correct me. Or if they raise their hand, tell me and we'll let them come up here. But this is, again, this would be our most significant needs if we were to address, address the schools in these priorities. Okay, so where are they? Where are these schools located? So we looked, took a look at this by region. Now keep in mind, this was not any particular directive by the district over the years to necessarily inform the numbers to look this way, these are just how the numbers have fallen out over time. And so you can see on the left, the priorities, Priority One, Two, and Three, and then those with good playgrounds in good condition, across the top, you'll see the region structure. And we thought it was important to maybe put it in the region structure. And we're going to look at how this falls out with Board District Two. But we kind of like for, you know, with this new model, we kind of like for people to kind of be used to looking at this regional structure. And so what you'll see in Region One, it's pretty good, it's, you know, pretty consistent across the categories there. You'll find a couple of schools falling in each priority. Region Two, pretty, you know, pretty much the same thing. Region Three, now you'll see, Region Three is in really good shape. Out of the 11 schools, nine are in Priorities One or Two. So we've got a couple in Priority Three, nine of the 11 schools are in good condition. I think, and we'll get to that when we show the Board District, I think it'll, it'll bear that out and make a little more sense because over the last several years, some of our schools in the South Knoxville area, I know Ms. Christie can speak to this, have made some very concerted efforts to upround their playgrounds over the last couple of years. And so where that's been a combination of private donations, school act, or internal school funds, sometimes it's a combination of that, but they've, the parent groups have worked really hard to bring those playgrounds up to standards. And so I dare say that a couple of years ago, if you would have looked at this, it wouldn't look this way. And so that's, so you're, we're kind of seeing the improvement that those schools have made. Region Four, you can see some pretty significant needs there, especially, well, you can see 11 of the 12 schools are in one of the three priority areas. Region Five is kind of an anomaly, so it's interesting there, that six of their, of the 10 schools there fall, with playgrounds fall under Priority One, but yet we have four of the schools that are in good condition. There's kind of like no in-between there, kind of a, kind of a feast or famine, so to speak. So what does this look like for, in, with, by Board District? And there you'll, you'll kind of see how this lays out. And so for District One, you'll notice that looks a lot like Region Five, right? Because we have a number of schools in District One and Region Five. So again, half the schools in Priority, half the schools with playgrounds in District One fall under Priority One, and then, but yet the other half have, you know, they're in good condition. District Two, you'll see kind of a somewhat consistent spread across that. District Three with only the one elementary school, but it's in, fell under Priority Two. District Four, you'll see the spread there. District Five, we have two schools there, one under Priority One, one is actually in good shape. District Six looks pretty good. No schools there fell under Priorities One or Two, so four of the six are in good shape. District Seven, you can see that we don't have any schools that made that best category. So all five schools are really within those, within those priority areas. District Eight, so half of the schools are in Priority Three, obviously those better than being in Priority Two or One, and then we had a few there that's, that's in pretty good shape. And then District Nine, and this kind of speaks back to in Region Three, right? So we have some, some South Knoxville schools in that. And so again, over the last couple of years, they've made some pretty significant strides in improving their playgrounds. So for the most part, in that, in that district, it looks to be, looks to be pretty good. So this is the thing that everybody wants to get to, right? What's the estimated initial cost to bring all playgrounds up to standards? And let me just say, the real caveat here is this is not an exact science, so we're not going to have a precise cost on what it would be to bring all the playgrounds up to standard unless we just went out and got quotes for all of the playgrounds across the district, right, that were in need. And so obviously, we haven't done that yet. So we tried to attack this as best that we could in some kind of a rational or logical approach, and so we used three cost models. One, we're going to call it a cost per student. And let me just say, in all three models, to some extent, we have relied on a cost per student, but with this one, this is just kind of right out of the block, kind of a, kind of a simple approach, it's a base cost, and so that was based on, from several months ago, we received an estimate that for the new Northwest, if we were to build a playground from the ground up, right, it would be about $300,000. And so we just simply divided that by the, by the capacity of the school, which is 1,200. Obviously, the school's not going to open up with the max capacity of 1,200, but that, that gave us that, okay, if it was at max and we had a playground structure, that came out to $250 per student. And so what we did is we took 250, we looked at all of the schools in Priority One, and we looked at the average daily membership or the enrollment in Priority One, we added all of the students that would be affected in that priority, and that, those groups of schools, simply multiplied it by $250 to come up with the cost. And then in the second, we'll show a summary of what those costs are for all three models. And then we just took that same methodology, applied it to Priorities Two schools, but we backed off. Instead of charging the full cost, we backed it down to about a third, with the understanding that Priority Two would not be as expensive, obviously, as Priority One. But there's, again, I want to emphasize, there's really no exact science in backing that down, it's just intuitively, you know, we knew that that would be less expensive. Did the same thing for, and then multiplied that by the total ADMs for, the total number of schools, with the total number ADMs, multiplied by that rate to come up with the cost. Did the same thing for Priority One, backed it down another third. So the second model we used is what we're going to call a playground utilization rate. That's based on our discussions with vendors back several months ago, and it was determined at that time that a pretty good rate is about 20% of students at elementary schools are at recess at any given moment. And so we used that factor, and it was also based on those discussions, based on the average square, square foot cost that would be associated with a student at play, based on the equipment that would be available there, is about $2,000. But I'll just summarize it this way, it ultimately came out on a per pupil cost of about $400,000 per child. So again, it's more expensive than that first model. So we just used that, did this, applied it all, you know, across the board to the total number of students falling in schools in Priority One, did the same thing for Priority Two, backed it down a third, same thing for Priority Three, backed it down another third, right? And I think, I think the first model came out to about 2.8 million, the second about 4.4 or something like that. We'll get to that here in a second. And then the third way is randomly selected quotes. Interestingly, this came out higher than, than the others, which, which kind of scares us a little bit, right? Because these were actual quotes and we did that, but now it was based on a small sampling of, of schools from each priority group, maybe two or three, something like that. And so we got actual quotes, and whatever that school was, we looked at their pop, their average daily membership, divided it by a cost per child. Did the same thing for the other school in that sampling, did an average and extrapolated that data across all schools in that priority. And we did the same thing for Priority Two, did the same thing for Priority Three. So here's how the numbers, here's how the numbers stacked up. So these are in millions, but, so that first methodology, if you go across the top row, if we use that first one, go all the way to the right and you'll see it's 2.84 million. Again, all of these scenarios included the new Northwest because the assumption is if we were going to bring all schools up to standards, you know, clearly we would include the new Northwest school within that. Playground utilization rate, far right column, 4.35 million. Randomly selected quotes, 5.4 million. So you can see there's a real big range there, right, from 2.8 million to 5.4. And so we just took the average. And again, there's a, there's a lot of caveats here, right? Unless we went back and did actual quotes for all of, all of the schools with all of the equipments, equipment in need. So it's 4.2 million. We want to take a look at it too. If you look at the average daily membership, so for Priority One, 4,633 students, those were the number of students in all of the schools who had playgrounds that fell in Priority One. And you can see a per pupil cost there of $367. Again, that's based on an average cost of 4.2 million across the board. Priority Two, you can see, more students affected under those schools in Priority Two, came to 232. Under Priority Three, 6903, so we had, we had more schools that fell under that category, more, more students. But as, as to be expected, you can see that the per pupil cost for Priority One, more than Priority Two, Priority Two more than Priority Three, which is what we, what we would expect. Okay, so how would, if, if the board wanted to go down this road, how would we pay for it? Again, this is the initial funding to bring all the schools up to program standards. So there's, there's three that really kept jumping into our mind when we were looking at this. One would be fund balance, and we're going to get into kind of the pros and cons for each, for each category. So fund balance would be one, capital plan would be the second, the other would be to seek partnerships with, with other, with other entities. So let's look at fund balance. So the pros, the first one is kind of, you know, it's kind of obvious, right? It's a one-time cost, it's an acceptable use of one-time funds. Now, if the board were to decide to commit to doing this, I do think there would probably be an expectation that if all schools were brought to standards, the playgrounds at all schools brought to standards, we would, we would want to keep that going, right? We wouldn't just want to walk away from it and be back to, back at this point again in 10 years or whatever. So there would be some recurring costs, we'll get into that in another slide later on. But, but to bring, this initial cost, it would be an acceptable use of one-time funds because technically it's a non-recurring cost. Another pro is that we do have a solid fund balance level right now. But there are some disadvantages, there's some, some cons here. One is, and I'm going to keep emphasizing this over the next couple of slides, the actual costs are still to be determined. It could be more than 4.2 million. Remember, when we looked at actual quotes, although it was just for a few schools, it was significantly higher than, than the other two, you know, two methods that we looked at. So, you know, the actual costs, it could be higher, we just don't know until we would get actual quotes. This is the one that's the, the big red flag here, the uncertain economy. Now economists, if you, if you, if you look at all of the articles right now, economists are kind of all over the place. You have some that are saying that a recession could hit anytime, some are saying it could hit three months, some are saying it could hit sometime next year, just don't know when. Some are saying, okay, it could be 18 months from now, right? So it's kind of all over the place. Now, keep in mind, the economists, they, fortunately, they missed it badly with COVID because the, you know, the economy kind of initially took a little hit and then it bounced way back pretty quickly. The thing that, that does concern me a bit though, in, in, in an uncertain economy, is I was here in 2008, I think it was 2007, 2008, when the recession hit. And that particular year, we missed our budget revenue projections by $10 million. And so in order to keep operations going, we had to dip into fund balance to just continue to, to keep the operations. When I say operations, that's kind of a non-threatening word to not have to say payroll, right? Because that's where the most of your operations come from. And so fortunately, we had, we didn't have a, you know, what I would call necessarily a huge fund balance, but it was sufficient enough to get us through that time. The following two years, the federal government had the ARA, American Recovery Reinvestment Act, something like that. We were able to actually use those federal dollars and save 100 teaching positions for two years in a row. And so those dollars really paid off because those dollars allowed us to buy time for that, for the economy to kind of work its way back up into a level that, that we could sustain. Without those federal dollars, it would have been really, really, you know, we would have struggled really badly. If something like that hit again, there was no guarantee that there would be any kind of federal relief dollars anyway. So I think that's why it's important that we always have to be really guarded in how we use our fund balance. And so we just, we want to continue to keep an eye on that. I can tell you that the last two years have just been banner years with sales tax collections, two of the best years I can ever remember, back to back. The first couple of data points though, that we've looked at this year, while it seems to still be encouraging and maybe perhaps even a little more than what we had budgeted, it looks like it's not quite to the growth level as what we've experienced over the last couple of years. So we're keeping a really close eye on that. So if that's starting to kind of turn, we want to be really careful in, in, in watching that. And then lastly, to use fund balance, it would be essentially utilizing funding or utilizing dollars that might otherwise compete for other initiatives. And the reason I thought that was important to put that up there is with textbooks, those who have been on the board long enough to know, where do we always pay textbooks from? We always pay it from fund balance. We start out budget deliberations every year, and we include fund balance in there because we want to get it into the recurring budget. And then lo and behold, as we're trying to balance the budget, ultimately, we, we look down, you know, through the list and go, well, there's textbooks, you know, we can fund that through fund balance, let's pull that out and we can kind of help, it helps us balance the budget. But there's probably only so many years that we'll ever, you know, we'll, we'll be able to do that. At some point, we really need to make a commitment to try to get those dollars into the budget. And I can tell you, they can be significant, we'll get into that here in a second. But, so historically, we funded textbook adoptions through that. Facility upgrades, we don't, that's not, our practice mainly is to use the capital plan for that, but with the pandemic, and Dr. Adams can, can attest to it, and, you know, the pandemic, the, the cost of, of, you know, the supply chain has, has really increased. So the cost of instruction is, is increased, and we had to go back to fund balance, otherwise we'd have had to modify the capital plan. We went to fund balance to kind of, you know, meet the difference there for, for those costs that had exceeded original projections. I think it was like, well, I think we went back to, over the last couple of years with facility upgrades, probably eight or nine million dollars we've had, we've had to kick in there. Because we want to be really careful on those debt levels. And so we work really closely with county finance, and so those debt levels, when, when, when the raiders come in and look at that, they'll look at that total debt level from the county perspective. So there's a, there's an obligation from both the district and the county to try to keep those combined levels, you know, reasonable. Because otherwise, when they start to increase beyond a certain point, it starts to have an adverse effect on your, on your, on your interest rates, which then obviously, or, you know, it's going to, it's going to be costlier when you, when you pay the interest on that, on that principal. We've also funded some student devices with our one-to-one cost. The bulk of that, we've, we have been able to fund under ESER. ESER will go away, of course, in a couple of years, we'll talk some more on that too. Vehicle purchases, normally we try to budget vehicle, vehicle purchases in, in the budget because we can see, okay, down the road, there's vehicles, a dump truck's got 150,000 miles on it, we have to buy a new and whatever, but sometimes we'll get kind of blindsided. I know we had some, with some maintenance vehicles we had to replace. We had like some, I think, hearing and vision vans, like we had kind of driven the wheels off of those things. And so suddenly, we kind of got all the mileage we could, and then we had to replace them during the year. So we do have some facility, or some vehicle purchases there. That's not an exhaustive list, but I just wanted to underscore the fact that we have had to go back to fund balance to address some of these things that didn't make it into the budget. Okay, capital plan. Well, now, keep in mind, the capital plan, we typically fund projects over time through municipal bonds. And so we use general obligation bonds, and it's typically a 20-year payback. The, the advantage here with the capital plan is if the board wanted to undertake this initiative, we wouldn't have to write a check for like 4.2 million dollars and set it aside, right? So you could pay for it over time and you spread those payments out, it's kind of like a, kind of like a, a mortgage, if you will. So we would finance it. But the, the disadvantage there, again, I wanted to put this in front of the board, again, the actual costs are still be determined, we don't know it's 4.2 million, it could be more than that. But when you finance something over time, you add to your debt levels. And so that's, once again, we're kind of, we're kind of buttoning up to that maximum amount that we don't want to go over. And, and so we would be adding to the debt level if we were to, you know, to program into, into the capital plan. Not saying it's a, you know, it's a, it's a deal killer, I don't mean it that way, but it's just more debt. Either that, or we would need to go back into the capital Either that, or we would need to go back into the capital plan and identify projects that would come off, right? That would be the only way not to increase the debt level. We would have to identify some projects that, well, we're just not, we, we value this initiative maybe more so than another. And kind of the obvious step on the, on the, you know, the, the, kind of the pro in that you, you avoid the initial cash payment on the front end, pay for it over the time. The downside is you incur interest charges over that same amount of time. So normally, you can figure that, we went back and look at this. If you, like, like for the capital plan, for every dollar you borrow, over a twenty-year span, you're going to pay like a dollar fifty, probably something like that. So it adds cost. It's about kind of like half again, about fifty percent. And then lastly, if we were to use general obligation bonds, those are a typical twenty-year buyback or, or pay down. So we know that playground equipment generally is not going to last twenty years, right? Unless you do something about that, unless you replace it or whatever. So the problem here is that with a capital plan, if, if you're, what you're doing, you're paying for it over time, you're incurring more cost than what it otherwise would, would, would cost through the interest charges. And you're potentially paying interest, principal and interest payback with an asset that no longer exists, right? Because it's already out of service. So you kind of, you know, you have to kind of weigh that. So there's some pros for each. There's some, and there's some disadvantages for each. I say partners, okay, partnerships. The obvious one here is that it would be a shared investment, right? That, okay, the board would not be bearing the whole entire cost. Could there, could there be some sort of cooperation with, with, with other municipalities? Like, I'm, I'm certainly not saying this would be the case, but we could approach maybe the county and, and the city and maybe some sort of a partnership. Maybe we could approach, you know, private donations and try to kind of nickel and dime our way up there. But the, but the downside there, again, initial cost, it could be more than the four point two, like I've said before. But the potential there is like, can you, can you really secure four point two million dollars, right? So what if, what if, you know, there's, there's an agreement here, but you don't really secure the total amount of funding. So then it limits the number of sites that, that you could, you could address. And so if that's the case, then it, it kind of creates some challenges, right? So would, you know, in order to, let's say we got half of those funds, or a fourth of those funds, or a tenth of those, whatever. What would be the selection criteria, right? So there would have to be some determination there. Would it be in the form of, of grant applications, right? Could it, would there be a selection committee? Probably would have to be. What about schools that, what we don't, the thing we don't, we wouldn't want to do is like create some sort of hope or expectation and a school apply and then ultimately not enough money for them to get it. So those are some things we would have to grapple with if we, if we went down that road. So now, you know, we talked about if, if the board were to bring all of the schools, all of the playgrounds at the schools up to standards, there, there likely would be some expectation to maintain that, right? And so if so, there are, there will be some recurring costs that would be associated there. So let's talk about some of those. We've estimated that, again, these are, these are soft numbers, right? So we've, an annual estimate of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that's, that's within a quick, equipment and personnel make up that cost. So let's talk about equipment. So we would want to get schools on a replacement cycle, right? So it's like every ten years. We don't know the life of, I mean, there's no exact science for the life of a piece of equipment. It, it would depend on the participation rate and so forth. We took a look at this and, you know, there's a, there's a different range with, with, with the life of playgrounds. But what we kept seeing was anything from eight years to twelve years. And so we just kind of went in the middle and said, okay, eight, a ten year sounds pretty reasonable. And if it's four point two million dollars to, to bring all the schools up to standard, the assumption is it would be a ten-year replacement cycle. So then that would be four hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year because we do know that some schools are in really good condition right now. But then that would be money that, okay, they, they would have some schools that would start to kind of roll off, right? They would need to be addressed. So we would probably need to, to be thinking about how we're going to fund those schools that, that don't have the most immediate needs and send get schools on a, on a, on a rolling replacement cycle. But again, if, if the annual costs are more than four point two million, or sorry, the initial cost is more than four point two million and we're on a ten-year replacement cycle, obviously that, that could affect the, the, the annual cost, which would be higher than four twenty. And then additional personnel, we're thinking probably three additional positions. One would be a playground manager and then we would, they would, let me go back. Two would be maintenance, two additional maintenance workers. And so these would be folks that would be focused on, on maintaining playgrounds. You know, we have, what, over fifty elementary schools. We have actually more, we have multiple playgrounds at some, some facilities. So it's, it would be a full-time job trying to maintain this. So that would be initially the, the, the best guesstimate we have for, for an annual cost. This would be into the, in the general purpose fund. The one thing though, is we want to make sure that, that folks understand what's on the horizon for potential future costs, future budgetary considerations. And I've heard the superintendent on more than one occasion, and I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but I've heard one of his priorities, obviously a salary increase is trying to increase, you know, the salary, average salaries for our teachers. And so our PECA agreement right now is a four percent annual increase. We've been able to meet that three of the last four years. It, we had, we actually had never met it, right? Until about, what, four years ago. And we've been able to meet it three of the last four, four years. I know a priority superintendent is going to continue to do that because we want, we want to increase our ranking in comparison to other districts in the state. We have actually made some strides, but we're not anywhere where we need to be. So obviously, we don't want to go backwards. But every time we do that, if you look at a four percent increase plus steps, you're looking at an annual cost of twenty million dollars. That would be twenty million every year as long as we continue to do that, a minimum, because obviously, you know, you have inflationary costs and so forth. So that's a pretty significant investment every year that, that, that we want to place as a priority. Another, and I alluded to this earlier, increasing debt obligations, major initiatives there. And you're going to know these. So four new facilities. So Lonsdale, Adrian Burnett, New Northwest, and then a new Farragut on the horizon, Farragut Elementary. And so those are huge, you know, very, very needed, significant investments in debt. Also, that's not to mention our HVAC and roofing upgrades that, that we, we continue to, to have to address. And again, these are just the major initiatives. Sturkey addition, HVA addition, we're putting like, what, maybe thirty classrooms, twenty-eight, thirty-two, somewhere around in that range. So those are, that's additional debt rolling online. And this is kind of a sobering thought, but our current five-year capital plan total, if you look at just the projects on the approved plan in this five-year total, it's an additional debt of a hundred and sixty-three million dollars within the next five years. That's if we don't have any other needs that come on the radar in the next five years. And it's like we've looked perfectly into the future. There's nothing else there. We know that's probably not the case. So again, that's, that's a, that's a, you know, pretty significant. Now, I think there's probably sometimes, and I even have to watch it too. And, and there's, there's sometimes there's this idea that, well, it's the capital plan, right? So we do that through bonds. We're not talking about the general purpose budget, are we? We actually are. And so the capital plan debt costs are supplemented by the general purpose budget about half. The general purpose budget has about half. So how did that happen? Well, it's, it's been a product over time. So the county has a debt service fund that services the debt for all projects of both the county and the schools. And that fund is supported through property tax collections. And the, the, that fund has been supported over time through just natural growth, right? Because there hasn't, there, I mean, there's been what, twenty-two years maybe since we've had a property tax collection, or a property tax increase. So that's been sustained over time through just natural growth. Well, what's happened to us is over that same timeframe, our growth with, with debt obligations has exceeded the revenue going into that fund. And it's, it's, in, in, obviously, the capital plan initiatives that we've undertaken are very much needed. But just the reality of it is, is that the, the debt service requirements, the principal and interest, the growth in the capital plan has exceeded what the debt service fund has the capacity to support. So then what happens is, is over time, the general purpose budget has had to fund the difference. And so for this year, it's probably around seventeen or eighteen million in the general purpose budget. So just know that for every brick and mortar, whatever we, we undertake in the capital plan, just know that ultimately, this is kind of the trend here has been, whatever that, that project has been, about half of that cost is going to be funded through the general purpose budget. And so if there's seventeen million dollars of cost going right now towards supplementing debt, and again, these are very much needed. So don't, don't hear me say that, hey, these shouldn't be done. They're very much needed. But the reality of it is, is that seventeen million dollars of educational initiatives that we can't do, right? So I just wanted to kind of keep that in front of the board there. That, that's why there's such this urgent need to, to, to watch our total debt. Also, with future budgetary considerations, net staffing increases. Currently, we're, we're really evaluating that closely, especially in line with our budget deliberations on how we staff schools. We've had a staffing formula for years. We've made tweaks to that formula, but we're really taking a hard look on, are we staffing schools the way we need to be staffing? And so we've got a lot of folks kind of weighing in on that, getting a lot of, a lot of input on some ideas on what we need to do there. So we also have new school staff. And what I mean by that is while Lonsdale and Adrian Burnett are essentially replacement schools, the New Northwest and the Farragut Elementary will not be, right? So, you know, we could say, well, why are we in, you know, why, there's going to be rezoning, right? Can't we just shift teachers and positions along with that and work it out? We can. But we just know that it doesn't always come out perfectly in groups of twenty-five or twenty kids, right? Also, you have things, obvious costs like utilities, you have transportation costs, things you didn't incur before. You have, you know, administrative costs and support that you need at the school and so forth. So we know there's going to be additional staff there. IEP needs, these never go away. We, we, we do as much as we can, and I know Jason and his folks do a fantastic job in, in trying to find the most efficient way to use our, our federal dollars to fund these needs. But the reality of it is, is the needs exceed what the, what the, what the, you know, what the requirement, or the needs exceed the money that, that we have for those federal dollars. And so we fund quite a few, especially teaching positions, special education, teaching positions in the general purpose budget. And so that's, you know, we have to, you know, and it, when, when, when something happens, we have, we have a need that, that comes down in, say, September, October, whenever. The reality of it is, is, is at times, we really just don't have any choice but to add a position. And it may be an unbudgeted position. So those are just some things to keep an eye on. And so there's more. This is, and so this, this is something we real, and we've talked about this. So for ESER, currently, we have a hundred and two million dollars of ESER funds dedicated strictly to the four core priorities of the district. And those dollars, and again, this is cumulative dollars over a two- or three-year span, but just keep in mind that these dollars lapse in, in twenty twenty-four. So we'll be out of this money in, by September of twenty twenty-four. And so the question then becomes, well, okay, wait a minute. If, if these are some initiatives that's proven really successful, how do we keep these initiatives going when there's no more federal dollars left? And so I want to talk about some of those major initiatives that, in a couple of years, we may be looking and trying to onboard these into the general purpose budget. And so again, these are just the, these are just some major ones that we found. These, obviously, it's not exhaustive. But, so we have tutors, right? So elementary, early literacy there, middle school math speaks to the foundational skills, our, our first priority. And then we have high school tutors that speak to credit recovery success for every student. So hopefully, these tutors, this work will prove to be beneficial. We hope and expect it will be. And so we want to be really careful. If it is, then we need to try to find a way to continue some of these initiatives going forward after the federal dollars have, have, have lapsed. Technology, student and staff devices. A couple of years, we embarked on the one-to-one initiative. And so so far, while we've, we've actually paid some of that in fund balance, the bulk of that so far, we've been able to cover with ESER dollars. But again, those are going away. We invested really heavily in, in interactive panels. So I talked with our IT folks and said, hey, if we didn't have any of this money and we had just a replacement cost for both of these items, what are we looking at? And it's like, eh, probably eight to nine million a year. So it's pretty significant. Some of these are costs that, you know, these, these are not insignificant initiatives that, that we will be having to look at. And so more, more major ESER initiatives. Obviously, we've invested hea, heavily in counselors, in college and career advisement. I think this speaks to like our third priority, career empowerment, mental health supports. We've, we've been able to increase our partnership with Helen Ross McNapp, you know, that, to, to try to address some of these mental health supports. There's a host of other things that we're doing there as well. But we know that over the years, we've seen how critical and vital addressing this need is. Teacher leader supports, again, it, it points to effective educators, you know, in, in, or great educators in, in, in our schools. And so there's some, some pathways there that we put into ESER. And then we also have, you know, a significant amount of professional development we've invested in, department chair stipends and so forth. And so also, we talked about the textbook adoption, how we want to be able to at some point get this into the general purpose budget. So I talked to their CNI folks. I think the next one on, the next adoption is math. We've kind of bought some time, right, for the last couple of years because there's been some, the states kind of had some things going on there. So I talked to their CNI folks and said, hey, can you give me a rough estimate of what we may be looking at? Because we want to, we want to bring this into the general purpose budget. At some point, we're going to have to. And this is what they told me, seven to fourteen million dollars. And so, boy, that's a big range. Well, again, it depends on, you know, if you do a full adoption, do you do a partial adoption? What materials do you get? So it's kind of a broad range. But anyway, those are just some of the major ones that we have to look at. And we're not, you know, again, we're not saying, you do, we do one thing, we don't do neither. We're just saying these are some of the items that we are being forced to look at down the road with regards to the, with regards to the budget. So anyway, that's kind of a really fast way to go, to go through this. But we wanted to be transparent on, on what we thought the costs were, what we found. But we also wanted to full disclosure in some of the, some of the things that we're, we're grappling with from a, from a cost perspective. So that's, that's it. And we'll open this up to questions. If I can't answer it, I may yield to Dr. Adams or, or Anna Parson or Doug Shover if, if we, if we get into some, you know, how, how some of the schools were placed into the different, into the different priorities.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Ms. Jared. Thank you, Mr. McPherson. I know that just, not just you, but a ton of people have poured into this presentation and really studied and done the analysis and looked at all the different angles. And appreciate you bringing some perspective. I mean, everything in education finance is a trade-off, right? Nobody ever gets everything that they want. It's just not the way it works, right? Yeah, and you've been, you've been in this business long enough to know that. So I want to paint a picture for just a second. Can any of us imagine a vibrant, healthy elementary school where kids are learning, enjoying life, that the culture is right without a I mean, I don't know. I, I can't imagine that space, right? Like, I think the assumption by most people is, no, elementary schools and preschools like need playgrounds. I think that's the assumption, right? And there's also a wide body of research that speaks to the connection between play and kids taking breaks cognitively to be able to be successful. And some of our priorities in Knox County schools right now is excellence in foundations, foundational skills and success for every student. There's a, I'm going to send a body of research that I've been gathering and correlating to the board. But one quote from this says, "Outdoor play provides the opportunity to prove, improve sensory integration skills. These activities involve the child as an active participant that address motor, cognitive, social, and linguistic domains. Viewed in this light, school recess becomes an essential part of a child's day. It is not surprising that countries that offer more recess to young children see greater academic success among the children as they mature. Supporting and implementing recess not only sends a message that exercise fundamentally important for physical health, but likely bring together children from diverse backgrounds to develop friendships as they learn." And that's, that's from a report that I will send you all. Also, state law says that children in elementary school have to have a thirty, a hundred and thirty minutes per week of break. And that's not counting physical education. It's not counting walking through hallways. Like, they have to have a break for at least thirty minutes, which the default in elementary school, the assumption is, you would be doing that on a playground, right? So we have a state law that's also saying, hey, kids need this time. When I first came on the board, one of the very first things I did was I went around to different schools throughout the county. And one of the schools that I went to was Chilhawi. It was the very first school that I went to. And we just, at the principal for a day presentation, we got, and the first thing she did, the principal there, Ashley, she showed me the playground. She said, can you believe this? And I'm like, oh my gosh. Like, I've had kids at that point in Knox County schools for twelve years. Like, I've had kids at that point in Knox County schools for twelve years and had never been a part of a playground fundraising campaign, thank goodness, hadn't had to be. And and she said, look at this playground, we're going to have to raise the money. And at that principal for a day, she just shared that, hey, they hit that sixty thousand dollar goal, but it took three years to do it, the prices increased twice, and the kids who helped raise that money are never going to, never going to play on that playground, likely, right? Many of those kids won't. I have built two playgrounds in my nonprofit work for the village, so the village is a lo, is a community for low-income families, single moms and their kids, and there's two playgrounds at that community. I can't imagine having built that neighborhood and asking those families to build that playground, right? Like, I can't imagine asking those twenty-four low-income families to, hey, here's this great neighborhood, and if your kids want to play, go, go sell some pizza, right? Like, I just can't imagine doing that. And to me, the question for us as a board isn't should we have playgrounds or not? I think everybody would be like, well, no, we should. To me, it's like, well, whose responsibility is it? Is it the community's responsibility or is it ours? And that's, to me, kind of like my ultimate question. And I know there's competing, competing interests, but to me, it feels like this is something that should be our responsibility because it does put an undue burden on communities. I noticed that one of the schools in the list was Lonsdale. Is this the, the, the one that's in a level one? Is that the Lonsdale school we're building, that we built?
Uh, I may have to, I may have to defer.
I guess my question is, we don't currently fund dollars for playgrounds at new schools, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So we're, so we're about to build a Northwest, Northwest Elementary School, we just built a Lonsdale School, and we're going to build those schools, and then we're going to rezone it and tell people, you're going to this school, and by the way, if you want a playground, you got to raise money for it. That's kind of how it works, right?
Yes.
Right now, okay. So I don't know what the history of this is in KCS schools. I've not been able to find it. I've been asking people. I don't know if at some point we were in the playground business. I don't know what other districts are doing across the state, but when we do build a playground, it does become the property of the school district, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're asking communities to build assets that Knox County Schools owns, and then we're not, we are not going to maintain them, basically, is the, is the current position. I'm not saying this in this way to fault anybody, I'm just trying to like, put the reality out there, right? Like, we're asking communities to build playgrounds, and then we're going to say to them, we're not going to repay them, or we're not going to, we're not going to replace them or anything like that. So are those good schools, and I don't know if you all would know this, the good schools in District One, are those at the community schools? Do we know those four or five?
I'll have to look.
Okay.
We could get that.
Yeah, another question I would be curious about is, have you looked at those schools based on poverty level because, in a, in a particular zip code of that school? Because I did.
No, this assessment was basically on if the playground is compliant.
Yeah, so the reason I think that's an interesting, it's interesting question is seventy-three percent of those priority level-one schools are in District One and Two, which are our highest poverty districts. And so it makes sense to me that those would be at level-one and seventy-three percent because likely, those schools have not been able to, within their own communities, bring that up to par. And it would, and there's lots of ways to look at poverty levels. I would be interested in seeing that exact same table that you just put together based on free and reduced lunch on those schools, and I think that's probably a number that we could easily pull. What I would, what I'd like to try to figure out as a school system, I know there's lots of reasons and lots of competing interests. What I would like to try to figure out, is there a way we can do this and take this burden off the community? And I appreciate, Ron, all the work that you did to show that there's three different ways in your, in your all's minds, and I think there's probably some, some creative energy we can put to try to, to try to move that down the road. But at the end of the day, what we're talking about for ongoing cost is twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents per student per year at five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, based on twenty-seven thousand elementary students. So right now, we fund at a minimum per student per year, five thousand, and it gets up to fifteen, depending on the school, somewhere in that range, right, Ron? So we're talking about taking twenty-two dollars out of five thousand dollars a year per student, elementary school student, at a minimum, to, which is one tenth, and then the total, the five hundred and eighty thousand, is one-tenth of one percent of our total budget. I guess what I'm saying is, like, I hear that there's competing interests, but to me, the ongoing cost is not a huge amount. It's not a huge amount. Mr. McPherson, what's our current fund balance?
Probably around sixty-nine million, something like that.
Sixty-nine million, and what, what roughly is the percentage of that, basically?
Probably about twelve percent.
Twelve percent, and the state requires us to keep three percent, right?
Correct.
So we are in a really healthy position, and I know that we're not always going to be in a healthy position, but I do know that for at least twenty years now, because what I've heard is that this shifted in the eighties, maybe thirty years. For thirty years now, I think we've unintentionally burdened our communities by asking them to take care of this issue, something that I think we all fundamentally agree is needed in elementary schools, but we're also passing that burden on to our communities. And I don't think it's any one person's deal. I mean, I get, I mean, I get that, but I also think that there's opportunities that, also being in philanthropy, every community has a limited amount of fundraising capacity. Every community does. Doesn't matter if you live in Farragut or if you live in Western Heights. Every community has a limited opportunity for fundraising, and some communities have significantly more limitations in terms of capacity of fundraising. And I think we're just, we're asking communities and putting an undue burden on communities for something that I think we think is fundamentally needed. And Dr. Roswick, I appreciate what you're saying. I mean, in your role, in the same, in my role at the Restoration House, I got to be looking out five years, right? Like, I got to try to understand what are all the levers. I think as a representative of the school district, in particular, my district, which my district, there was only one school on that, in the, on that particular list, Cedar Bluff Elementary, now only have five in my district. I think I have the least amount of schools out of any, out of any district. But I think as a school board member, it's trying to, you know, part of my responsibility is, you know, how do we help meet those needs of those families? And I think it is something that's expected that kids would have access to, but I think we're unburdening, or we're burdening our students and our families.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was about fund balance also, so thank you for that. I, I would not be in favor of adding this to the capital plan. I think with the amount of, or with the short asset, life of the asset, I don't think that makes sense to do that. And and as Mr. Watson said, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year is not, it's a small percentage of our budget, so I don't think it makes sense to add to the capital plan. And I know over the last couple of years, you've been moving out of, some things out of capital into general purpose, so I don't think that should be on the table at all. And so I, we do have, we have a healthy fund balance, so if we're going to do it, I think now may be the time. I do think that there are a lot of things competing with that, so I think that, I appreciate you going through that long list, because as we're thinking about anything and everything that we, that comes before us, it's, it's that same pot of money. So, so anyway, thank you.
Reverend Butler.
Yes, thank you. I echo the remarks that already been made, and thank you for the work that you've done. I too wanted to know, I want to know the elevens schools' names in, as in priority one.
We could get that. We've, we've got, I don't have them offhand, but we can, we, we can send that out fairly timely.
And seeing that, if my memory is correct, I see six that are in region five, but five of those were in District One.
Yes, sir.
And so, so I, I really echo what Mr. Watson has said, and also, I think that if we already have kids in those playgrounds right now, and they're on school property, that's a liability. That's a liability. It's not just a liability, a financial liability, if someone gets hurt and what we'd have to pay, but it's a liability that someone can get hurt. So I think that when you say that you have over thirty schools that have need for improvement on the playgrounds, you're talking about you have thirty schools that have liability that we know of, the kids can get hurt. So that's, my concern is, is the, the health and safety of our kids as well as their education. So I think that we need to address this as a, as a, as a district.
So, Mr. McPherson, can you tell me what our monthly payroll is?
Don't hold me to this, but it's probably, probably looking between thirty-five and forty million, maybe, something like that.
So, in speaking of fund balance, right, and I know you mentioned...
It's not quite, it's not quite two months of payroll.
Right, but it, it's not more than two months of payroll.
Correct.
I guess that's the point I'm trying to make.
It's less than two months, yeah.
And my other question, and I don't know if this is for you, Dr. Adams, but as far as safety goes, we do inspections, I believe, of those playgrounds every year, and structures that are not safe, we do not allow children to play on. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do, and Adam can actually speak to the work we actually do to the playgrounds as well.
So we inspect every playground every two months, and then we'll send the inspection to the school administrator and our maintenance department as well. And maintenance will automatically generate a work order for anything that needs to be corrected and go out and correct that. So the schools on priority one are not necessarily not safe. They, you could have landed in that priority because we can't get a replacement part for you. So if something were to break or malfunction, we'd have to remove it opposed to replace it. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it's not safe.
Adam, can you speak to why is we have so much difficulties with replacements about them not making the parts anymore?
Well, over time, I mean, companies go out of business, you know, and if playground company A goes out of business, you can't purchase a replacement part for playground company B because they are not going to touch that. They want you to buy a complete new system, and I mean, there's just no way around it. So, I mean, if we have to remove a broken step from a platform, I mean, to maintain ADA compliance, that whole, that whole structure may have to be removed and blocked off. So it's, I mean, there are schools of priority one that have just some minor issues like that, but it's, they're not unsafe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out some of the, we haven't used the word disparity, but when we're looking at two of my schools where one of them took three years to raise ten thousand dollars for a swing set, and another one had a foundation that raised four hundred thousand dollars in that same amount of time, that's, that's something we need to consider when we're looking at school to school and whether they have the same, the same quality of equipment. Because if we put all of it on, all of it on the community to raise the funds, we have one school that can raise four hundred thousand dollars in the same amount of time that another can raise ten thousand, and those students don't have the same opportunity to, to use that different kind of equipment. It's vastly different from school to school. I don't want to use the word, Mr. McPherson, I don't want to use the word savings, but that's the only word I know to use. Do we know what the savings is for this year so far based on our unfilled positions?
I don't. I don't know if Scott here, I don't know if Scott has that in his fingertips or not, but we, we could, we would have to look at that. I know that traditionally, when we do have savings, what, what we find is, at the end of the year, we, a lot of times, we'll use those savings to fund potential overages or, or overages that from unexpected costs, and so that's really saved, that served us well, that employee turnover, in order to be able to address other needs that, that come up, and then potentially, when we've had to utilize dollars out of the fund balance, then we utilize those savings to replenish it, so. So I, we could, we could probably come up with something on that.
My thinking is that some of that would be rolling over into that fund balance, and so it, it might be larger than we, than we have considered so far. The other thing I wanted to, to talk about briefly is, when we're talking about, no, they're not unsafe, we need to also realize that that piece of equipment is also not there. So, you know, some schools are adding equipment, and others, it's like, oh, yeah, we can't find those parts, take it out. And so they're seeing their playground get smaller and smaller and less and less day by day. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think everyone in the room would agree and support, we want playgrounds for kids, want to have them. Obviously, the question's cost. I would agree with Ms. Horn about capital improvement, certainly don't want to fund on interest on depreciating asset like that. The question I have is, would we be able to kind of combine that, right? So think about using fund balance and seeking partnerships with other entities. Could we begin the process, or is there a way to authorize the process of seeking some partnerships just to see, you know, is there, you know, Commissioner Jay, could we, could we get some county funds? Would they be willing to help us with, you know, the initial replacement cost? Could, you know, we talk to city council and get some, you know, funds from the city to help with some of the initial costs of getting them, you know, up to standard? Could we begin that process? Is there a way we can see what money might be available for us before we make the decision? Let's say we don't want to spend the full five, whatever, maybe six million, whatever the amount may be, and we don't feel like we want to take that out of the budget. Could we begin the process of looking to see what other funds are available, and then then maybe that number now goes, you know, once we get cost, now that number's now is three or two million, and it's maybe more, more ea, easily, easily done?
And I do believe, and Mr. McPherson, maybe you could speak to this. So the county commission had designated four hundred thousand dollars, I believe, that schools could apply for in grants, and it could go, I don't think it was limited to playgrounds, but that is something that I could be supportive of, you know, maybe some one-time funding and, you know, letting schools apply in the, in the form of grants and maybe making the schools that are, you know, the highest need schools get priority on those. That, that would be a thought as well. I don't know if you could speak to that, the way they did that?
So that, right, that was a grant policy, and it's, it wasn't written into the policy, it was my understanding, you know, I kept hearing four hundred thousand. The deadline for application has passed. They did receive quite a number of applications, and I think there's, there is a selection committee made up of some representatives from both county and the school district, and I think they're reviewing those now. So there, there is a precedent, I guess is where you're, where you're going with that, so.
Just throwing that out there as a possible option to, without committing to something for several years without really knowing, you know, what's going to happen with the economy. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Adam, just a quick question and comment, maybe you can speak to it. I think part of what you were describing about not finding parts, part of that is the challenge in the which way, in the way that we do this, in that I think each school is basically seeking out vendors on their own, right? Like, if they're going to build a new playground or add stuff, they're seeking it. Now, I'm sure they have to go through some kind of procedure, but we probably have many vendors represented at different schools. Is that probably fair to say?
We have three vendors on term contract.
Okay, so there's, there's three, there's only three that they can use?
Correct.
If we were to take this on as a school district instead of making it school by school, would we, do you think the right approach, would it still, we have three, or would we, could we go to one? I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, if you're only using one vendor, the likelihood of you being able to get parts might be greater. Now, there, there's risk in that.
Well, I mean, the, the companies, I mean, they're all reputable companies, it's been around for, for years. I mean, you would eliminate a lot of choice by doing that.
Okay. Yeah, so it, so it's not, so what I was thinking is, there was many vendors, but there's only three.
Right, I, I don't think that presents any type of barrier to anything or makes things more difficult.
Cool, thank you. I think another opportunity in, in, when we talk about partnerships, is also philanthropic partnerships. So, I mean, Randy Boyd just wrote a check for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one school, right? I think there's an opportunity to combine some public-private dollars for this initial lift, because we're talking about initial lift and ongoing cost. Now, if I was being asked, I don't have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I was, if I was being asked to invest in that, I would want to have some reinsurance from the school system that you're going to maintain my investment. And so to me, that's kind of the trick, is like, can, if we, if we raise and pull this initial lift from community resources, philanthropic, and also other public, public dollars, can we make that commitment as a school system? And I know Commissioner Jay was, just referenced a few minutes ago, I think he's still here. I'd like to see if you would come up, Commissioner Jay, and just speak to anything from commission standpoint. I'd like to see if you would come up, Commissioner Jay, and just speak to anything from commission standpoint.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for the opportunity to, to come up and speak. I hadn't planned on this, I was just sort of jotting some notes down. But I, I, I want to bring a little bit of context to why I'm involved with this altogether. I'm, I'm in a different legislative position. You know, I'm on one side of the world, US is on the other, but it really started several years ago when I was contacted and asked if I would help some, raise some money for Pond Gap Elementary in their playground. And I did, and I personally wrote a check and, and raised a little bit of funds, and that, they were really close to their goal. And then, soon after, Mount Olive contacted me, Carson Daly and I were closely together on many initiatives, and Mount Olive reached out, and, and they were much farther alo- away from their goal. I helped them put together a presentation, I again wrote a personal check, my wife and I, raised some other funds, went to several major donors, got to close the gap and got that going, and then I, I think the word got out, and so other schools started calling me. I, I visited and spent some time with Westview Elementary School and helped secure some funds, which turned into a big purple slide, which is really cool, if you haven't been out there. And then, got a contact from Brandy at Sunnyview Primary, and went out there and, and said, this, this might be the saddest playground I've ever seen. I mean, I really, I went out to, to Sunnyview, and mo- I think, close to half of the playground had been removed, because Knox County Schools will certainly inspect them, and they will certainly condemn them, and then they will remove the pieces. What was left was rusted, there were several pieces of, of, of metal rope thing that were exposed that were dangerous, quite frankly, and it was on a, on a fast downhill slope. And so, i- it was a, a little bit of a walking path, and that was it. And it just was, you know, it was just amazing to me, and that's when I, I think it was that third or fourth school, I kept asking, okay, well, is this a policy? Like, I don't, I, I don't get it, much like your comments, like, why, why isn't this a basic part of elementary education and, and facilities? And, and everyone kept citing the policy, oh, there's a policy that, you know, we don't, Knox County doesn't fund schools. And so, of course, I'm incredibly persistent sometimes to, and, and I, there's a fine line there, I know, I understand. But I kept saying, okay, show me the policy, show me the policy, and, and of course, nobody could. And what ultimately I discovered, like many of you, is it just became a practice. Probably a tough budget year, and, and the school sort of said it's on the community, and that, that just really, it, it just amazed me. It amazed me that, as I looked more and more at the schools that are in the, in the lea-, you know, the hardest economic neighborhoods, the, the playgrounds were worse and worse and worse, and we are asking these children, these families, and these communities to, to play on that. I've asked many times, you know, would we enact the same policy? If a basketball, the roof fell in on the basketball court, would we say, you know, great, appreciate that, but you all have to raise money to put a new roof on if you want to play basketball? No, we, we just wouldn't do that, and why isn't this part of the basic education of, of all of the things that we know that are of value? I pledged to Sunnyview that I would, I would do my best to, to raise awareness of this. I started to come talk to many of you. I, I committed to them that I would raise money for them, and I would give personally. And then, with amazing humility, they said, look, Chilhawee Intermediate is really close to their goal. If you would please help them first and put us second, we think that that is a greater need. And so, I went over to Chilhawee, I thought Sunnyview was the worst playground I ever saw, and then I visited Chilhawee Intermediate, and, and they were close to, I think they were about eighty-five hundred dollars away from their goal. You'd heard that this goal had been stretched many times because it just, it took so long. And so, I committed all of my commissioner funds, I wrote a check personally, went out and raised a little bit of more money, and, and we got them over the goal, and they are installing that today. Eighty percent of the children at Chilhawee Immediate today will never, that raise the money for this will never set foot on that playground. And it just amazed me, as I continued to ask more questions, that it wasn't just about new playgrounds, it was about basing maintenance. If a school needs mulch, the school has to raise money for mulch. Kids have to sell pizza, they have to do car washes, they have to do coupon books. I have drawers full of coupon books that I buy every year from as many kids who'll ask me that I never use because it's so important, but it just, it just baffled me. And so, I, I would sort of, sort of take a step back. First, I want to say thank you to Ron, to, to everybody on the team who did do an assessment, who did go back and look and try to sort of grasp this. What I think is before you is not necessarily one particular budget number or another. It's a philosophy, it's a culture shift. For thirty years, we have said to the, to the entire community, much less the poorest parts of our community, it's all on you. If you want this thing, it's on you, and we haven't provided for that. And so, I would just challenge you to think, is this a way we can, to, to shift the culture and the mindset of, of this school board and this community to say, this is vital and this is important, and these will help with, you know, kids that have energy issues, well, every kid has an energy issue, but focus, reading, breaks, healthiness, happiness, I mean, teachers having an opportunity to take a breath. You know, we should do the basic maintenance at, at the bare minimum. Right now, I, I would just ask you this, just, just somehow create a policy or create a, a culture that says, from this point forward, whatever we have right now, let's just take care of. Let's not have kids selling pizzas and coupon books just to pay for mulch. Then we'll figure out the rest. I mean, I, I really appreciate the presentation and the work that's gone into it, but this is a presentation of thirty-seven reasons why we shouldn't do this, and no reasons of can we do it? How do we do it? I love the ideas. County Commission, we have put a fund together, can we do more? There's private sector, there's a lot of different ways, but it has to start with sort of a willingness of, is this a vital part of our school system? And if it is, how can we achieve it? How can we do it over a year, or two year, or three year, or four years? There's always going to be competing priorities. But sometimes, when things are good, you catch up. And we've got about twenty or thirty years of catching up to do, and I would just encourage you to say, if we want to, as a board, figure it out, let's put that as part of our, our culture and our community, come to commission, I promise you, at least you'll have one champion. I'm one of eleven, you'll have two, because Carson Daly is right there with me. And come to us and say, how can we pull this off? And there are incredibly generous people in this community that will, that will step up to the plate. But it's got to start with a, an ideology of this is important, and it should be part of our future. So, thanks for the opportunity, and thanks for the work done.
Thank you for the challenge, too.
And, board members, speaking of Commissioner Daly, everybody has a copy of this email, right, Ms. Coaten? Okay, so, Mr. Daly did send an email today, and if you could forward that to, to board members, thank you. So, any other discussion, questions?
Can you speak to what Commissioner Daly said?
Actually, yeah, I'll just, I can read it. The purpose for writing this email is to ask that the board adopt the same grant program as Knox County. Knox County has four hundred thousand dollars in matching grants for schools in the fund. Several elementary schools have applied for this grant and maybe two high schools. For a PTO or PTA to raise funds for a large project would mean that the amount could be cut in half. Smaller schools can benefit greatly with this program. Please add the same amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the Knox County Grant Program. So, basically, he's asking us to match what the county has, has put in, it sounds like. But I can have Ms. Coaten forward that as well. All right. So, with no other discussion, we will move on to our next item, which is discussion on legislative priorities. Ms. Owen, would you like to take the lead on this, or would you like for me to, or?
I can say I would, I was assuming somebody else was doing that since I didn't, I didn't put it on here, but I can.
Okay.
I would start by saying, TSBA sent out today their list of legislative agenda items, the priorities, their position statements, and quite a bit of information. So, since that came out just this afternoon, I've copied those for you, and you should have those at your, at your place also, so we can refer to those if we need them. Ms. Coaten also has our legislative priorities from 2022. And then, I believe there are a couple of suggestions for additions here from other board members.
Right, and I guess I should speak a little bit. So, when adding this to the agenda, I think we voted on it in January last year, is that correct? I just wanted to make sure everyone was thinking ahead, and we didn't get to January, and Ms. Coaten not have anything, or everybody be kind of like, you know, we, we need to come into January knowing, or having a good idea, right?
And I had said that I would bring it to policy review, but I, I had flu, so that didn't happen.
That was unfortunate, yeah, unfortunate timing. So, again, that, that's why this is on here, just as a reminder, and so everybody can review what is here, if there are other things that we would like to see added. Certainly need to be sent to Ms. Coaten, so that we can kind of have a cohesive document, and that's a good starting point, coming into our, our January meeting, which, again, that's why I thought it might be a good idea to put it on tonight, so we can at least have an initial discussion about it.
It, it might be good to also take a look at the last, the second page of our priorities from last year regarding academic and retention decisions, so that when we get to that, that discussion later in next week's agenda, we can have that.
All right. So, any other questions or discussions on this item?
Should the members who brought these other suggestions discuss those?
Would, would either of you like to speak on this, or just, it's up to you?
I mean, I, I'll just say, I, I'm one of the members who brought two suggestions forward for parents' rights and literacy instruction, so I did send those to Ms. Coaten this afternoon, so, you know, you do have a copy, but if Ms. Coaten, if you don't mind sending those to the board as well, so they can look at that, and we can talk about those when we have this discussion and vote on it. I think those are some important things to maybe look at, thank you.
Ms. Spite?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think as far as the, this on the suggestions with Dr. Norton's third grade retention suggestions or changes, wording changes, I don't really know exactly how that would be paired in, especially because I am so new, but I did have a lot to talk about later on down, so I don't know exactly how that should work.
Well, we're not voting on this until January, so, so if you want, I mean, if you want to discuss it now or later in the agenda, it's completely up to you.
I'm okay with that.
You want to just wait, okay. All right, let me find, I've got a lot of stuff here, let me find my, let me find my agenda. Okay, so moving into our regular session agenda. Consent agenda, items five A or B, any questions or concerns? Item C, this was actually something for West High School football team that required action last week, and congratulations to West High, by the way, that's exciting, I know, Ms. Spite, you're excited about that. Did you want to speak to that, Gary, or John, or Sarah? It was just to use UT's facility, right, for their practice. So, moving into items and contracts, D1 has been withdrawn. D2? Three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight?
I had one on six.
Okay.
Could someone speak to the services with Swan Educational Solutions for the charter school applications? I'm confused about why we're considering that contract, since that's not something that came up during Ms. Spite's presentation to us.
I'm Kathy Dugan, and I work with Julie Thompson, the Director of Academic Supports, to support and monitor the charter schools in Knox County, and we haven't had charter school applications since Emerald came on in 2015. And so, now we have two charter school applications, we have two letters of, well, we don't have the applications yet, we have the letters of intent. One is from a school in Chattanooga that's wishing to replicate, and the other one is from a local group that are, that they want, the one in Chattanooga is a K through five school, it would be Knoxville Prep, it's an all-boys school, six through twelve. And the other one is a K through five school, that's got a philosophy base, and it's an early literacy, emphasis on early literacy. And since we have, we, we put, knowing that we would have some new applications this year, we put some money into our charter school budget to cover the cost of a consultant. We don't have the, we don't feel that we have the experience within our authorizing group to, you know, run an application process. It's hundreds and hundreds of hours, collective hours, of editing documents once the review team looks at them, and so we really feel like we need an expert to support us in this process.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that explanation. It, it concerns me that you don't feel like you have the experience on the team, because it was my understanding that part of building that team to review applications was to build a team of people who could adequately evaluate charter school applications.
We have the experience on the team to evaluate the application. It's the piece where you take all of the documents that the team, all of the application documents, and compile them into one document, so that we present them to the board. We don't have anyone who has actually done that work before in Knox County. So, this is someone who is, she, she was the Director of Charter Schools for Metro Nashville, her name is Carol Swan, and she does these application reviews for other systems. She's worked with Hamilton County, she's worked with Memphis and Nashville, and she's a regular consultant. Her job is to run these application processes. Many school systems contract with outside consultants, consultants, because it's the time, it's, it's, it's the time that it takes to put them together, probably more than the expertise, I probably misspoke.
I would say too, Kathy, to that, that when you look at our, our charter policy and the folks that make up that committee, they're not all on-staff people. So, we have parent representation, we have community representatives as well who would not be previous participants in a process like this. And because we are largely using a state rubric, those tools to assess those applications, my understanding from Julie is this is kind of a required piece, we have to have everybody up to speed on.
I guess my question then would be, if there is, if there's a, a format that we need to be able to present it to the board, why aren't we requiring that the applicants compile that information in that format before they present it to you?
Again, I'm new to charter as well. My understanding is that, again, there, there is a, a set of required things that they have to include in the application. There's also a rubric that the state provides for the assessing body to look at those applications, to see if they have included the elements at the level and capacity that they are supposed to, so that they can then make a recommendation to the board based on that assessment.
And I would be happy to send you a copy of the rubric and the application materials, so you can see what the, what the team will be looking at and how they'll be looking at the application.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Kathy, another question, sorry. The, you mentioned the name of the, of one school, are you able to mention the, I haven't heard of the second?
Yes, the second school, it's a group called Lifelong Learning Collaborative.
Lifelong?
Lifelong Learning, no, Lifelong Learning Collective. And they want to start a school called An Academy, it's going to be substantially smaller, it's going to be a K through eight school, and it's a group of philosophers, for the most part, philosophy professors, and they're very interested in incorporating philosophy principles into early literacy. And they, another emphasis is smaller class sizes, so we'll see. We don't have, we don't know as much about them as we do, since Chattanooga Prep- since Chattanooga Prep is seeking to replicate, so we'll be interested to see what they come up with.
Thank you. And I have a contractual question, too. It's a, I think by memory, I think it's $8,500 or so for the contract for Ms. Swan. Is it, is that per application, or is that total?
It's $9,500 for both applications. We asked that, we were worried about that, too. And she actually, we actually got her to reduce her contract initially. She had quoted us a higher amount, and since $9,500 was all that we had allocated from our charter funds, she agreed to do it for $9,500. So we feel like we're getting a deal.
So is it reasonable to say that if we were looking, let's say, at five applications this year, that rate would have been more?
No, she said that, well, we haven't, we're not going to get any more, because today was the deadline for the letter.
I'm trying to think from a board member's perspective, future budgetary cost, and I'm trying to get a sense of, do consultants base this on per application, this type of contract? Or are they saying, for this period of time, this season of applications, it's one fee?
Correct. Yeah, she's doing it for a season. It's a project fee.
Right.
So if she has one application or five, that's her fee.
So it's not based on per application?
Right.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And Ms. Spie?
Okay.
So if this is for these two, is, when we come around next year, it'll be a completely different total if there are more applications next year?
We might not get a break. Like we have this, like we might budget a little bit more money, knowing that we could, that her fee is higher. She reduced her fee this year. But it would still be one fee per however many applications we have. Like if we have one application or we have five, it'll be the same amount, whatever she quotes us next year.
Okay. And then anything that you are sending to the other board members, a rubric, and any other materials, would you mind also sending to me or to all of us?
I'll send them to Ms. Cottney, and she can get those to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rose?
Yeah, I just wanted to say first, Kathy, thanks for what you do. I mean, it is, there's a lot to it and a lot of different entities from the state involved. So I'm just going to say this, too. Typically, what has happened in other larger districts, when they, when there are multiple charters that come on board, that, like their department tends to grow with that. So she referenced Carol Swan and Metro Nashville. There's a, there's a team of people who run and monitor those on a daily, on a daily basis. So I would imagine, I mean, we start talking about, you know, three, four, five, those kinds of things. But obviously, at some point, we'd have to have staff to help manage and do some of those kinds of things, if, you know, if that came to fruition. So there probably wouldn't be a need, you know, if this became a regular practice, for us to do that over time. I mean, right now, our charter support consists of you who does an amazing job on a part-time basis for us, and then, and then working with Ms. Thompson as well. So you kind of build your capacity and kind of move off contract at some point, probably.
Right, because right now, our charter fee doesn't allow us to fund a full charter office, like other systems. And as we get more charter schools, that number will increase, and that's an idea down the road.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For clarification, it says that the cost is up to $9,500 plus travel expenses. Should that say including?
No, it is plus travel expenses, and...
Where is she traveling from?
She's traveling from Nashville, and she will probably only come over once for the initial application review team training, and then the rest of the meetings will be virtual. But Julie talked to several people and consulted, and we felt that the best way was for her to meet everyone in person at least one time.
Okay. My last question would be, is it possible to, to have the charter applicants pay any part of this cost?
They do. Each applicant submits a $2,500 application fee. And so some of the money can come from that.
Thank you.
All right. So anything else on that item? Okay, still on your items and contracts, item seven? Eight or nine? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, on nine and 10, is there any issue on that? I don't think you had signed those, on those contracts.
These are some of those contracts where we've tried to work out an arrangement where it's the best wording for Knox County. These companies aren't willing to do so. I know there was one I worked on this month, based out of New York, and they weren't going to change from their New York law. So, you know, in that case, I'm not going to sign it, because it's not a preferred contract wording, but the board could still approve it, should the board so choose. I mean, I understand that these students, these parents, these teachers may want to do this, but what I would tell them is, you know, if the board approves it, it's kind of a take or leave it type of situation. So if anything major happens, then they'll have to do whatever that company says, you know, according to those terms of that contract, because it's not something that we can go to New York and fight, for instance, so.
So from our discussion during the agenda set meeting, the parents and schools would be at a risk for losing that money, should something come up, right, like with the safety patrol trips when COVID hit, and they...
That's, yeah, that's probably the best example. I mean, normally, it would have to be something, you know, radical. I would also say that, that if a, if a parent and student pays their money, and for some reason, they can't go, then they're probably out the money, right? I mean, you know, but, but as long as everybody understands that upfront, and, you know, and says, oh, yeah, I want this opportunity to go to New York and play at Carnegie Hall, or whatever it is. I mean, I know there's something similar to that in there, then, okay, fine. But you have to understand, you may, I mean, you may not, it may not work out. You may lose your money, too.
Okay, so, Dr. Wilson, do our principals, are they, have they informed these chorus teachers, or would they? Because that, we'd want to make sure that parents understand that.
We can certainly make sure that that is, that is clear from, I think probably from Gary's standpoint. I'd like to have a little bit of language on exactly where the issue lay in that. And I, I knew he was waiting on some contractual things to come back and make that final decision. But yeah, we would be happy to provide that.
Thank you. So moving on to item 10. Item 11 or 12? Item 13? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering why we have documentation pending for something that's on our agenda? Why, what's up there?
Mr. Dupler?
Sure, I can, I can answer that. Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen. On this particular one, we were trying to provide the maximum time available to, to reach an agreement with the city of Knoxville for the use of the recreation space at Lonsdale. We're very close to getting an agreement, but I learned today that, that there is disagreement on one issue. So this, this will be coming off of this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dupler. So moving on to board policies. Item 6A or B? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got to come to the last policy review, but I had to leave due to a family emergency, so I didn't get to stick around for all of it. And don't remember that, I don't think I was part of the discussion on this. On, on B140, there, it's in line 27, the part of the sentence that'll be striked with public notice of such agenda-setting meetings. So it looks like the, the policy would change from not public noticing when the agenda-set meetings are. Can somebody just share the thought process behind that? I don't know how often the public takes advantage of that, to come to those or not, but...
Ms. Horn, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I ask that, that this be redlined, because my experience was, when I was board chair, there were times when we would have an agenda-set meeting. And if media is there, the, whatever is on the agenda could be discussed on the news or in the media prior to the agenda being published, which means prior to board members being made aware of what's on the agenda. So the, the policy still states that board members can attend these meetings and just observe, not participate to observe. It just would be that the media would not be present, would not, it wouldn't be public notice, so that media would not be there, because that was my concern. Of course, we were dealing with a lot of, you know, big things then, and, and my concern was that it would be in the media before board members had any idea, you know, what was coming on the agenda.
So the intent, I appreciate the explanations.
And also, the other thing was just really for the flexibility of it. You have to have 48 hours for public notice. And I think Ms. Christie talked about this in policy review. And that, that was an issue when I was on the, was the chair also.
Right. And I don't, I mean, I don't have strong feelings about it either way, but I can tell you, just from being board chair, there have been times, I mean, like you mentioned, having to leave policy review because you had a family emergency, right? And there have been times, I mean, I think people know that we've had some significant health issues in my family, that we have public noticed something, and it has created a hardship to keep that commitment, right? And with, you know, the chair having to be there and the superintendent having to be there, you can't just say, oh, we need to do this an hour earlier so I can make this appointment, right? I mean, but again, I don't really have strong feelings about it either way, but I can tell you that, you know, life happens and things come up, and, you know, sometimes having that flexibility is helpful in those situations.
And, you know, I didn't really want to ask for this when I was the board chair, but I thought about it several times when I was the chair. And there were also occasions when, if we needed to have a called, or a work session, a quarterly work session, it may be that we could do that on the phone, you know, on a 10-minute phone call. And so rather than public noticing the meeting and coming here and going through that process, it could be done much more efficiently, you know. You really wouldn't do that with a work session agenda. But if you do a quarterly meeting, I mean, that's usually like, okay, we're going to cover these two agenda items or these two different presentations. You can literally do that, you know, in a five or 10-minute phone call. So those were the reasons.
Yeah, I appreciate the rationale, and I totally get it. To me, the purpose of that meeting is for planning, and everything's still going to come out in public notice, and then people can comment and all that. And, and it sounds like the intent, and I'm assuming, Mr. Dupler, that this is kosher, is that the intent then would be, like Ms. Horn said, that board members could still attend, but because they're just observing and they're not discussing, then it would not need to be public notice, even in the event of multiple board members coming, correct?
That's, that's correct. There's, there's consistent case law that says that observe versus participate. So if, if board members are just observing, then they can be there. Another example of that in recent memory is when, is when board members go and tour a school. You know, as long as board members aren't discussing and are just audience members, so to speak, that's fine. It doesn't have to be public notice. But if board members are participating, it must be public notice.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we're looking at the rationale for removing it, I'd like to go back and look at the rationale for why we put it in, to begin with. There was a time when one of our board members tried to attend this meeting and was told no. And so that's, that's where that came from, and it was before we were on the board, actually. But that person was not allowed to attend that meeting, not allowed to sit, not allowed to listen. And we put it in policy so that it would be very clear to everyone that that meeting was open, that people could come to that meeting, and, and went that step further of having it noticed. And I would also note that there has been a meeting, since I've been on the board, that I was told I could not be in the meeting, because there was a board member already in the meeting. And if another board member attended that meeting, it would have to be open. I think this gives some clarity, at least to this one instance, this one meeting, to make it very clear that we can be there. And having it public noticed, I think that just makes sure we are covered to say that, you know, if, if someone feels that it's deliberative for us to be listening, then it's open, so it doesn't matter. I feel like if board members are concerned about not knowing in a certain amount of time, then they can attend that meeting, and they can know at the same time. So I don't feel it's necessary to, to remove that. I felt very strongly about putting it in, and I can say that I've never attended the agenda-setting meeting, because I've, I've never felt the need to, but I felt like anyone who wanted to should be able to. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think to ensure the intent of allowing board members to still attend, it's also important to also put in the policy, and I would probably do it in bullet point seven, that says that the board secretary will notify board members, even though it's not publicly noticed, that I can't come to a meeting I don't know that that's happening, right? So even if I have the ability to come, but I don't know when it is, I don't, you know, that's not real helpful. So I would ask that, before we vote on this, that we add a line to section seven that speaks to the board being notified by the board secretary.
Does anyone need a break, or do we want to continue on? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. I think we have a couple of people needing a break. So we will come back in 10 minutes.
So, moving back into our regular agenda items. Board members without objection. Mr. Myers from County Procurement has been sitting in the back of the room most of the evening. He's here for Item 9A. So, without objection, I would like to kind of skip to that item and then go back to where we left off, if, if that's okay. All right. So, Item 9A, which is to approve settlement of $500,000 with Rouse Construction for additional expenses related to the Lonsdale Elementary School. And does anyone have any questions on that?
I don't have a specific question, but since Mr. Myers is here, if he would like to address it.
Well, yeah, he, he has been waiting, so. Mr. Myers, would you like to, would you like to come up and say hello?
Director of Procurement for Knox County Government. I don't keep the conversation going. Y'all have a long night, so if there are no questions with this, it's a simple change order, you know, that we were doing for Lonsdale. This will close the project out. The rain we're having this week, not going to get that top coat and the striping down, so we'll get that done just as soon as we can, and we'll be finished. Thank you all.
All right, so, moving back to board policies. I think we did 6A or B. Any concerns with C or D? Ms. Ellen?
Yes, I have a concern with C. While it makes sense to move the line about the, the responsibility to provide it for While it makes sense to move the line about the responsibility to provide information to the public, and I appreciate that that is still in there, do we have anywhere else where we have an expectation for principals to develop a public relations and outreach program? It looks like we're removing the principal's responsibility to engage parents in the community with their programs, and so that's a concern to me if it's not somewhere else.
Dr. Thornton?
Yeah, I don't have the policies in front of me at this moment. But the, well, no, I have that one. I don't have the other ones. There is a community and family and community engagement policy. I think that might be the title of it. But the reason this language was flagged was that it did overlap with another policy that had similar language, and was more consistent to what the principal's role would be in engaging families versus it being in a media relations policy. But I'd need to look and find it.
All right, so item D. E, item E. Item F. Item G. H. I, oh, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because this is a recommended new policy, Dr. Wilson, can you just speak to its intent for the public and what's trying to be accomplished here?
Yes, we, so, the academic acceleration policy and the new nature of it is driven by state law change, and we've always had practices, I would say, around how we identified students for honors coursework or advanced coursework, but it's never been formalized in a policy per this law change. It requires that we have a policy that speaks to that for students in grades seven through 12 in subject areas in English, math, and science. And essentially, the law change has new teeth in it, if you will, around how we communicate that information to parents. And so, it's really driven by, once we know which parameters students will have to follow to become eligible, we then communicate that with parents to make sure they're aware that students can, are eligible for those courses and can enroll. And really, kind of, it, the way the law is written suggests that they will be enrolled in those courses unless parents ask for them not to be. The parameters, I would say, too, to kind of clarify a little bit, are, by law, are required to include state testing data that we have for the TCAP tests, and then also the grades in the coursework that they're in, and then we're allowed to add some additional points for consideration as far as communicating that eligibility. But it's also not intended to necessarily limit students' access to those courses. So, it's really just a matter of having, having clear guidelines for who we would say is eligible for these courses, but that wouldn't be, would not prevent a parent request or a teacher recommendation to push beyond those recommendations to make students have access to those courses.
Thank you.
Item I. Or J. Moving on to grants, item 7A. 7B. C or D? E or F? Item G. Moving on to contracts, 8A. B or C? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at 8C. In the fiscal note, it says that there's no cost at this time, and that's problematic to me. As a fiscal note, if there's the potential for there to be a future cost, I would expect to see that there as well.
Dr. Wilson?
Well, I'll jump in, and if you need to clean it up, Dr. Wilson, you can. So, Ms. Owen, good questions. So, this is part of the procurement, at this point, has asked us to do, to procure multiple contracts for RFPs. I mean, if that is the case, and multiple are awarded, there are times that we don't spend on those, but they, so, it takes sometimes four to six months to procure something. So, if we put an RFP out and we secure those, sometimes we don't use those vendors, but they've been approved to be purchased off of. So, we don't currently have, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Wilson, we don't currently have any spend on those, but we could if we needed to, so that's why there's not a dollar amount.
My concern additionally with that is that often, we have an agenda item, and the board is told, "Well, you all already approved this, so now this is just the spending part that we're approving." I think when we approve something initially, whatever it is, we should be able to see the potential amount that we would be approving in the future. So, whatever these contracts are, if we expect there to be a cost, I would like to see that in the fiscal note. And if there's not a cost because it's, it's just going through, you know, this process, here's why this confuses me, because we have the names of the companies. So, if we have the names of the companies, that's different than going through the RFP process when we don't know what the companies are, and we don't know what the amounts would be, and we don't know what the contracts are. So, if we already have the companies, we already know what we're looking at, the potential cost is what I'd like to see.
I appreciate that, Ms. Owen, and I'll have Dr. Wilson speak to it. I think, I think they're secured contracts, but not necessarily projects yet, so I don't, you're probably better than I am at explaining that, Dr. Wilson.
Probably only slightly. So, I would say that this is, in the past, we have been, I think, encouraged through the procurement process to, if we think there are entities that we would like to contract, or we see the potential that we would do work with, to go ahead and seek out through the RFP process to establish those contracts, whether we are fully planning to execute on those or not. This was a procurement, or an RFP that was put out for support for early literacy pieces through the ESTR work. So, there would be money now, currently, sitting in the ESTR budget that was approved by the board in relation to that, and that's certainly an amount that we could go back and speak to. But these are contracts that span over multiple years. So, again, that would be, if dollars were earmarked in the future for that work, they would be earmarked in future budget allocations, I would imagine. The nature of this contract, as it was written and put through procurement, allowed for multiple fund sources to be used, and also allowed for multiple respondents to the, to the work. So, it was not a contract, or it's not RFP where one company was awarded, but multiple companies were awarded for the possibility of supporting that work, which is why you see multiple companies listed as being awarded under that contract.
Okay, Mr. Dubler, maybe you can help me with this. What the item says is approve contracts with. It doesn't say approve this RFP or accept this group as samples. It says approve contracts with, and then we have this list of contracts. So, aren't we saying that we are approving these contracts?
Yes, yes. I mean, these are, these are contracts that are fully approved through procurement. I believe what you're asking, and, and, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but, I mean, it sounds like you're asking for an amount like we would put in a term construction contract, because we have that. We have, we have contracts that are sent through procurement, and then they're approved up to $500,000. Doesn't mean we're going to spend $500,000, but, but that's the, that's the cap. So, it sounds like that's what you're asking, but I don't, again, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I really don't know what I'm asking, because this whole thing looks very confusing to me, because it says that we're approving contracts, but there's no dollar amount. And then we have multiple contracts that appear to be doing somewhat different things, and we're looking at contracts which also may be extended an additional four years, which to me is an additional funding amount that we also don't have. So... I need some clarification on what it is that we're actually approving here, and I'm not sure anybody in this room knows.
Well, I would say this, that, you know, the contracts are approved, and if, if this board in this district wants to use the, you know, the services of these companies, it's available. But, but what I'm hearing is that Dr. Ryswick and his team haven't, haven't decided to use these companies yet, but if they do in the future, I would advise that, that, that project and that amount be brought back to the board to approve.
Thank you, that makes more sense to me. I, I think the, the language here needs to make that clearer, and if we, if we want to approve this next, at the next meeting, it needs to clearly say that we're accepting them to be used potentially in the future, not that we're accepting these contracts, because that's something very different than what we're, it sounds like we're actually doing. So, if we could have some clarity on what we're really doing here before we try to vote on it, that would be greatly appreciated.
I hate to, hate to be, you know, yeah, 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 I hate to be more complicated. I don't think potential would work, because, because these contracts would be approved if this board votes on them. But, but there would not be any money approved to actually use the contract. So, in other words, this, this, this form is approved, and, and the board can use this company and these services, but, but the board would still have to put some meat on the bone, so to speak, in the form of some type of money.
So, then my question would change to, why are we approving these now instead of when they would actually be used?
I can answer that one. I can answer that.
That goes back, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. So, yeah, well, only, only because we have spent so much time, and I'm not in here, so much time and energy working with procurement to get this done, and Matt left five minutes too early, right? So, so, we've asked that same question, Ms. Owen, like, over the years, and I know, I know Mr. McPherson's been part of securing these kinds of things. So, what ends up happening is, when we get a grant, right, or we get a funding source, or we get, you know, ESTR that dropped from the sky, those kinds of things, you know, we have this, this window to spin down, but we can't spin down because we have to procure, right, and go through all the processes for that. What typically happens, and this is what, this is how it plays out in the schools, so the schools hear about this great training, or this great material that they're going to get, and we go, "Okay, it's going to take four to six months," right, because we have to procure it first. So, that throws off the training cycles for summer, and for all those kinds, and the stuff drops in October. And by that point, they're going on with a full year of doing what they do, and they're going, "How can we not get this back in the summer when we could have trained?" So, we've talked to procurement over the course of the last couple of years, going, "What can we do to be ready if and when dollars drop?" And they say, "Well, just go ahead and procure all of these potential contracts from vendors. If you want a instructional partner, if you want someone who does early literacy skills, like, go ahead and do an RFP for all those things, so that you have them kind of on retainer or whatever, that they're there, even though we may not have dollars for it now, or an individual school may use it, or, you know, again, we may get a grant for it and that sort of thing." That allows us to spend in real time, because we have the contracts procured and secured. But to Mr. Dubler's point, that would always come in the form of approval of the federal programs budget that comes, or the general purpose budget that comes. So, there's always still board approval of the dollars that come there, or a grant that we receive, but it's really to try to get that timing right, so that, and this is what procurement's asked us to do, put out RFPs, and wherever we say, "Well, what happened?" We do these kind of autopsies, or why did it take so long to get all that stuff? It's like, well, you should have had them procured on the front side, and they're not wrong, and that's the process for the county. But if we don't have these, then when we have dollars, we can't activate those grants, if that makes sense.
That all does make sense to me. I spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time with Matt for a couple of days. So, I understand all of that. The issue for me might be, in the future, when these actually come back, and somebody says to us, "But you have to approve the dollars, because you approved the contract back in December." And that has happened on multiple occasions, when we've had something on the agenda that's, here's this $8,000, let's say, and somebody says, "Well, you have to approve the money part, because you approved the contract." And nobody can ever explain that, "No, we really don't have to approve that money part." So, I think it's important, as board members, that we're all very cognizant of this, so that in the event that this comes back and somebody says, "Well, you have to approve the money part," we need to remember that, no, we don't. Thank you.
And I'll just say, from, Dr. Ryswick and I also spent a great deal of time with Mr. Myers over the summer. I hate that, maybe we shouldn't have bumped him ahead, right? And had that same discussion, you know, and what their frustrations with us are, because, I mean, I have heard those frustrations from teachers or schools saying, you know, especially with ESTR title money, saying, "Why don't I have this yet?" And it always comes back to county procurement, and they're like, "Quit making us the bad guys, it's, you know, you need to do the work on the front end." So, I don't know, but, you know, I get what you're saying, too. So, it's one of those, again, Mr. Myers left, so.
I don't have a problem with accepting it as, here are contracts we could use, as long as it's very clear, which it's not, but very clear that we're accepting these as contracts that we could use, and that they have to be approved in the future before we can actually use them.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a possibility, I understand all the sides here, of this being like contract options with the ability to exercise them? Is there any sort of legal language there? Because I, I understand all of it.
Mr. Dubler?
I mean, I think that's what, thank you, Ms. Bike, and I think that's what Ms. Owen's asking for, is, is some language that says that, that, that these are really options, that these are approved contracts, approved companies, but, but this board does not have to use these companies, but they're available should the board so choose, and should the board approve money for it. So, yeah, we can, I mean, we can look at the language and come up with something, and, you know, an option may be part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Dubler. So, any other questions on that one? So, 8D. 8E, well, it has been withdrawn. So, moving on to regular agenda items, 9A was Mr. Myers, he's already spoken, so 9B. Ms. Horn?
Madam Chair, I, on Wednesday, I will be asking that we defer this until the January, until the January board meeting, so I would say if we have questions on that, we can wait until January, would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Dubler, did you want?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to ask Ms. Horn, would you also be asking to defer 8A as well?
Yes, I will. I missed that. I realized that when she got to 8E, I was like, "Oh, I missed that." But yes, I will also, on Wednesday, be asking that we also defer 8E, which is the, the design contract for the Fairgood Area Elementary School, so I'll be asking that both of those be deferred until January. Thank you, Mr. Dubler.
Please, which, which ones were there again, please?
It'll be 8A and 9B.
So, 8A and 9?
9B. So, when we approve the, the agenda on Wednesday night, I'll be making a motion that we defer those till January.
And both of those are concerning the new Fairgood?
The land purchase, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Watson, did you have something?
I, I do have some questions regarding the matter, but if we're going to, if the intent is to postpone, then... is to postpone, then I'm happy to hold my questions, so...
So 9C. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we move this money, do we know what it will be used for?
Thank you, Ms. Owen. I say, I'll defer to Ms. Hemelgarnen if she wants to have Mr. McPherson.
Madam Chair, I'll defer to Mr. McPherson.
So it's, it's money, actually, it's just a, it's an entry that's required by accounting. So it's not changing the, the, it's not changing the intent of how the money will be used, it's just simply how we reflect it on the book. So it's, it's the amount that we are under with the total amount of lease costs, right? And most of that is associated with copier leases. And so, you know, accountants like to get together and figure out new ways to show things. So all it is, is we're moving it from other leasing into other, other charges or something. So it's just a requirement that we show the total amount of lease cost that's outstanding. So just for, so it's not, we're not, we're not moving the money to use it in a different way.
So this is not, it's not money from lease that was not used?
Correct.
That we're moving into a fund that we could use it?
We're moving it to simply another line item on the financial statements that, that's required by accounting requirements.
We're just renaming it for the fun of it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Mr. McPherson? So this is being driven by the accounting standards changing regarding to leasing, right?
Yes, sir.
Because that's an effect, and that's not just affecting our books, that's affecting everybody's books, who have to get looked at from a third-party?
That's correct.
Auditor, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Item 9D. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now that the group has been selected or presented for selection, can somebody just speak to the process of selection and how those get determined?
Dr. Wilson?
Sure. Yes, I'll do my best, and I'll tell you that Julie Thompson is away at conference, and will be here Wednesday night if there's anything that she needs to clean up. But essentially, the process begins with our own board policy that dictates who has to make up that committee. And so that was, that's the easy part, when you look at things like finance and operations, human resources, in terms of building that team. When you, you also have to layer in that each member has to fill out a conflict of interest form. So when we think about, again, that community and their knowledge and work with potentially the, the schools that would be potentially coming in, they have, we have to make sure that they have no conflict of interest with, with the applying parties. And so that actually took, took some work in some of those instances because of folks and their knowledge of those. So those are really the two big things, is ensuring that, that, again, we meet our policy and that we feel like we have representation that speaks to the, the needs of the community, the demographics, and, and we include parent voice and, and all of that in that process.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate especially the clarification around the conflict of interest policy. I think that's, obviously, it's important in any of the work that we do, but I think specifically when we're dealing with that, an issue that for some is very controversial, you know, to make sure that people are ensured that there's not undue interest in the agreement and the arrangement. So, thank you.
All right. 9E. Mr. Watson, did you want to speak to this one? Did you have anything to add?
No, I think we've had most of our discussion earlier in the night. And the only reason I added it to this part of the agenda is because if we, if the board did feel like it wanted to take action at Wednesday, it would give them opportunity to do that, so...
Right. All right, thank you. Item 9F. Ms. Bike, would you like to speak to this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We're revisiting this after it being in November, and I just wanted to say that I really think this decision should be between parents and our educators that are working with our children every single day and working so hard. And I really appreciate what Dr. Norton wrote up and sent to the board. And I think that if the law had read in some of the ways that she wrote, we wouldn't be here talking about this, we wouldn't have, be so concerned. But I, I am really concerned if things aren't changed. And I know a lot of people have said it's going to be changed. I'm never a person that likes to depend on what's potential. I like to make sure that I've asked for what I want to have happen and what I feel to have happened. And this isn't just also me speaking, just for me personally, because my third grader, I hope, will be okay. But realistically, when you look at the list of other schools, Alcoa, Anderson County, Williamson, Weakly County, Lynchburg, Robertson County, Wilson County, Warren County, Sullivan County, and Blount County, as well as potentially Athens City, Davidson County, and, as potentials that haven't passed yet. I don't know if Hamblin County has written theirs up yet, but they have passed that they will be writing theirs up. So there is this whole list of schools that say that this needs to be changed. And I, but I do think that this law gives us a really good opportunity to identify the kids that need help, and for us to ask for money, for funding, and to get those ideas to put that into place. And to just, you know, ping in on the stuff, our conversation last time, some of the things that I included and some of the things I cited were, you know, from the National Association of School Psychologists Guidance for Retention and things like that, showing that what a devastating effect retention can have. I think that giving these kids extra opportunities, but many times dyslexia and things like that are not identified until fourth and fifth grade. And we all know that there are gaps for students, and I don't want to just create that gap wide open for them. And then there's, there are so many unknown things when you look at the frequently asked questions of, you know, what is the appeal process for students? And for me in work, I never present a project or am at a place where the project is ready to implement until all of those boxes are checked. And I would love to see more of these boxes be checked, the where we know what's going to happen, where teachers know what's going to happen, where parents know what's going to happen before we start implementing this stuff. So that's my bet on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we were at our TSBA conference, Dr. Ryswick and I had an opportunity to sit in on a very interesting discussion with Representative White and Representative Love. And one of the things that stood out to me in that conversation, well, the first thing that stood out is that the whole conversation was on this third-grade retention law. They really didn't talk about much else at all. It, once, once that came up, everyone in the room wanted to be sure that, that their points were heard and their points were all the same as ours. But the thing that stood out to me was Representative White's comment, and he is the Chair of the Education Committee. His comment, when asked, will you be revisiting this law? He said, when you get a resolution from about every county in the state, you kind of have to revisit it. And I think that says a lot to us about the necessity of, of having this piece of paper that says we would like you to revisit this law. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would, missed that this year. I would have loved to have been there in person for that. Ms. Bike, I appreciate your work on this, and just have a technical question. You referenced Dr. Norton's email that she sent, and I know that she didn't write that in the form of a resolution. She wrote that to think through specific potential wording changes to make the law better itself, but, and I know that this is dated 10/31. Was there anything that changed in the wording for the potential resolution between when you presented it in November or, and when we have it now, based on Dr. Norton's recommendations or anything else?
Currently, nothing has changed, but it's because, I talked with Gary and trying to figure out exactly how, how it would be that you, I, honestly, I would like to see some sort of attachment to having this in our, to having her changes, some of her changes in our legislative priorities, and kind of an attachment or reference in our resolution saying that this is our resolution, and here, the things we're asking for are in our legislative priorities. But I don't really know the wording. Or, and I'm, I'm also interested in what other board members think and would like to see in how this could be better. I want to be collaborative about this.
Yeah. I, I actually really liked the suggestion of us as a district actually making some recommendations in terms of how the law could actually be better. And that probably can't happen necessarily in the form of the resolution. Mr. Dupler, is there an opportunity, or what would be the mechanism to, if we were to pass this resolution or something similar to it, and we were to push it on to legislators, is there some type of formal mechanism that we would need to say? And by the way, here's our suggested changes potentially to the law.
Well, that can be done, thank you, Mr. Watson, that, that can be done, you know, as part of the resolution, but, you know, there have been a lot of these resolutions, as has been discussed, and TSBA has a, has a similar resolution. So it's up to this board as to how you all want to do it. But I think Ms. Bike did, did suggest one way, which would be have the resolution, keep it in the general form, which is very similar to, to the, to the other resolutions that have passed, and then make it an attachment, you know, send as a second resolution, you know, a letter, you know, something, reaching out to the legislators. Yeah.
Dr. Norton, thank you for your work on that. I appreciate you and whoever else you involved making that happen. I, I do think it's important for us to add our voice on this. I mean, some might say, well, if everybody's already submitting one, one voice doesn't hurt, but we are the third-largest district in the state. And I think in some ways our, I don't think our voice should matter more, but collectively we represent more students. And so I think if we didn't submit a similar resolution, it actually might send an, it could send another message, maybe unintended message of, oh, Knox County doesn't think this is a big deal, they kind of like it the way it is. And, and so I'm not, I'm not necessarily as concerned about the particular wording. I think the intent is to say, we think you should revisit it, that there's probably some problems with it. But you all, but also, I don't think the wording says, hey, we shouldn't do anything to support our third, our third graders, right? I mean, I think the, I think it recognizes that, no, we need to do some things to help our, our kids, and we just, we need to do all, do a little more work to make sure that this is not something that actually ends up having the unintended consequence of harming children, so...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Norton, thank you for giving us exactly what I had, what I was asking for, which were specifics around what we, how we would want to see this law improved. So I'm not opposed to just adding this, the points you made, the list one through seven under, at the end of this resolution, so that it's on one, you know, one document with what we, with what we see. Because that, you know, that was the point I made last time, that we, we need to tell them what we want to see in the law. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to including that, and then in our legislative priorities, if we want to be, be more vague there, we could be more vague there. But I think that adding attachments or documents, I think is too much, they're not going to look at it. So the, you know, I think that if we have here the language, I think you could probably just add it right to the end of this so that they have everything together. That would be my preference.
I would agree with that as well. I would like to see it all collectively. You know, because I think the resolution in itself is good, right? But I also think that, you know, it, if you're going to, if you're going to complain about something, at least offer up some suggestions as to ways you would like to see it done. So I would be supportive of that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, and this is a lot like what some of the other ones that have passed across the state are, but to me, it's too vague. We need to give them, this is specifically what we want. And so I appreciate Dr. Norton's thoughts around that.
And I believe Representative McKenzie might have even said, said that when he spoke, tell us ways we can fix it. So that actually is also honoring his request by doing that, so... Let's see, who's next? I'm sorry. Ms. Owen, you are next.
I have some, some concerns with too much specificity. If, if we are too specific, will our legislators also be too specific, which is what they did to begin with? And, and could it happen that, that they take what we intend to be suggestions and use them as, okay, you don't want to use that test, use this test? So that would concern me, if, if we are giving them something very, very specific, that could also have some unintended consequences of leaving out other possibilities. So I think the, the broader language is what we want to ask for. We want to ask them to revisit it, we want to ask them to look at it. But outside of that resolution, we also need to ask them to look at all of the ways that children are different. We want them to look not just at all of the educational implications, but we want them to look at the child's medical needs, we want them to look at the child's psychological needs, we want, we want to consider every individual student's needs, instead of saying, here's the one thing that's going to decide. And I'm not able to show it to you now, I'm going to try to describe it. One of the schools that I have visited recently showed me some data, which I normally don't want to see, but the way they are using it is marvelous. They showed me a student who scores on T and Ready were the lowest scores I have ever seen on any T and Ready test ever. They were the very bottom. His class grades were As and Bs. If our legislators look at that, their reaction is that somebody's not doing their job. But the curriculum coach and the principals in this school are looking more deeply than that, and they are looking at other things that have happened through the years. So they have looked at all of his benchmark tests. So you come from these tanked T and Ready scores and these fine classroom grades, and then you see his benchmark tests all through the year, mastery, 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 excelling, all of these terrific scores, to show that he does know what he's doing. But if we had to depend on that one test, he would be retained. We don't know what happened on that one day, we don't know why that happened, that's something else to be explored. But we do know that he is mastering these subjects based on all of this other evidence. But there was a problem here. Our legislators need to understand that we need the ability to have our professionals determine where the issue is, instead of just looking at one list of things. And I think the way we talk about determining these things is also important, because we need to tell them that we have a county full of professionals who understand how to evaluate individual student needs. It's what they've been specifically trained to do for years. And they need to be able to use those professional skills, just like any other professional, to determine what needs to be done to help that student excel. And that's what it really comes down to. The, it doesn't matter how many lists of things we could come up with, the issue is really allowing our professionals to do their job. And that's what it comes down to.
Thank you. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that I'm clear and that I, and that I agree with what I've heard, so I got to be clear that I understand it. And that is that we, we want to, I would like to have a resolution from this board. And I think that we had asked Dr. Norton to take a look at how the resolution, revolution can be better. So I think that we would want to include that, and it could be now therefore let it be further resolved, that. I like the last statement that we already have is not limited to, so that we do these things that Dr. Norton says, or we say not, but, but not limited to, or to include some statement like that. So we leave it open for all the other things that you could, there's not... for all the other things that you could, that's not suggested there, but you still have some specific things suggested. Uh, and I do want to add from, from, from a District One perspective, uh, that I think you, we talked about 60% of the district, uh, the whole district students may be in this retention area. And I think for District One, the percentage would be higher. So this is something that I think, one of the reasons why we have our regions and looking at, at the way that, uh, feeder schools work, that we're looking at it that for that reason, so we can look more specifically at the needs of every student. So this fits what we have designed to do. So I think it's important that we say that and be as specific as possible, but also broad enough. And so I think adding, adding up now be therefore further resolved. My question is, can we do that and be prepared for that on Wednesday?
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. Um, well, first I want to thank Dr. Norton. I think I got ahead of myself and forgot to do that. I really, really appreciate all of your work and how great this looks. Um, and I think I agree with everyone here. And I think that's where I got a little caught up in or hung up in trying to figure out, cause I, I would like to have something that was attached to this, but I don't want it to be too specific. Or, you know, I don't want to tell someone how to do their job. I don't want to say like, exactly, this is how you should write this law and this is how all the things. But I do want to say, here is a suggestion of what we want. And I don't really know what that should look like. Um, but I would like to have something ready that we could vote on on Wednesday. Um, is there, do you have any suggestions of any way to piecemeal something?
Would you like me to try to do that?
Yes.
Sure. Oh, I'll take what you said, which was now let it be further resolved that, and then take Dr. Norton's language and slide it in there. And then I'll send it to Gary.
Or to include or not limited to.
Not, not limited to.
Yes.
Oh, English teacher.
Mr. Dupler?
Well, that's good. It sounds like it's coming together. But Dr. Norton, is there, is there parts of what you wrote that you feel like, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, we probably need to collaborate with you directly to make sure that, that, that there's parts that, that need to go in perhaps, and maybe other parts that need to stay out. Is, is that correct?
Um, I think in terms of the resolution landing on the desire for local control of the decision, the piece that they've pulled out with the, um, seven points around what is currently in the retention policy, around what data would be used for making that decision, is probably the most relevant piece to pull in to the resolution itself. And then possibly considering the other components as part of, um, legislative priorities makes sense to me.
Said we have a plan. Does it sound like? Ms. Owen, are we, huh? We have a plan? You have a plan? Awesome. All right. So any other comments or questions on that one? All right. So moving on to public forum.
Yes, we have several people signed up this evening. Uh, first is Annabelle Henley. You can state your name and county of residence and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, Annabelle Henley, Knox County. I had a three minute thing to tell you how excited I was about the possibility of this resolution, but now I just want to say, great job. You all were an amazing, uh, board. You worked together. You came up with a great thing. And so, good job.
Next up, Marty Wood. You have three minutes. State your name and county of residence, please.
Okay. My name is Marty Wood. I am a special educator, special educator. I, uh, used to work for Knox County. I've been independent for 28 years, working with students with dyslexia, uh, one-on-one, and have a couple of people working with me. And recently started, well, this will be our fifth year, it's not that recent, a council, Knox County Council, Dyslexia Advisory Council. Uh, that includes, uh, it's not run by any one group. It includes, uh, people from the UT, uh, teacher preparation programs and several people, uh, that are administrators in Knox County and parents and academic therapists like myself and, um, organizations, representative from organizations. And we've met several times. Uh, we met, we meet quarterly to, uh, communicate the best way to work for individuals with dyslexia. So our response to this law, which I can't understand to begin with where it came from and why it came, I mean, I know it came from the state, but I don't know why, uh, it was approved to start with. But, uh, I did, we did find in the, um, in the state frequently asked questions. And I think, um, you were the one, Ms. Horn, that added that to the policy that students with learning disabilities was that you, that with learning disabilities, um, wouldn't be able to be held back if that had anything to do with their, um, doing bad on the TCAPs. So anyway, it's in the Knox County policy. Okay. It's not in the state policy, but it's in their frequently asked questions. It's number 11 under special education. So you have to really look for it, which means parents aren't going to know it's there. Uh, many teachers aren't going to know it's there. And it also says suspected disabilities, if those disabilities would cause a low grade. Um, I think this resolution is mainly asking them to give permission to our Knox County schools to make those decisions on their own. So that in itself was in the resolution as far as, um...
Thank you.
Time's up.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Uh, Candace Bannister. You know the rules already, so.
Uh, Candace Bannister, Knox County. Um, uh, first let me say, thank you so much for working so well together tonight, playing well with friends, uh, and coming up with a really good plan for getting this done on Wednesday. Um, we've covered one test, or one part of one test cannot possibly be used to make such a huge decision in the life of a child. I appreciate that our board does support parental input. And I think, you know, all of, most of you are parents and that gives you the impetus to want to have a say in whether or not somebody else, uh, halfway across the state makes a decision for your child. So I appreciate that you have that in mind. You asked about why, why would they maybe do this? Um, in talking with several legislators with, uh, with our coalition, um, the first thing that we always hear is, we've got to do something. Forty percent, only 40% of our children can read in third grade. See, that's what they hear. They're told that 41% of our children are proficient in reading or on grade level. But what they hear is, only 40% of our children can read. And that is absolutely not true. I'm a second grade teacher. I did it for 25 years, that and third grade. We sit down with our children every day and hear them read. Every week we do a, a reading, or I did, did a reading with them, a one-minute read to see how many words they read per minute. Um, it might range from somewhere 22 words per minute, which are your low readers in the beginning of second grade, all the way up to children that read over 200 words per minute. But they are reading. It's not that we have non-readers. We just need to find a better way to be more efficient. Uh, I think Dr. Ryswick said it best when he said, uh, if, if retention were an effective intervention, we, we would be using it. We're not using it here in Knox County because it is not effective. Um, across the state, generally only 2% of our children are retained. Uh, and we need to leave it at that. Uh, we don't need somebody. And the thing is, our legislators are not educators for the most part, right? You all have access to the best educator, educators, um, and experts in East Tennessee, and none of them are telling you this is a good idea. So, um, I would appreciate if y'all come together on Wednesday and let's get this thing done and send it out there and let them know that, you know, it's not the right thing. I think that they do feel the need to do something because they want their state to be great. They want our kids to do well. They, this is, you know, we love the volunteer state, but it's not, they didn't get it quite right. So sometimes you have to tell people exactly what you feel is best, and they may not take every word that you say, but they may at least hear the message that there need to be some revisions so that we have the local, um, control here. I, I, I did have to retain that child one time I told you about last time without parental support, and it didn't help that child because that parent didn't support that retention. And it was out of my hands. We have to have parental support for something like this to matter. And I just appreciate that you all take that to heart. Um, so thank you for advocating for our students, and I can't wait to see this done on Wednesday. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Paula? You're up.
I appreciate you all so much. And thank you, thank you for giving me an opportunity to at least share my passion, cause I am going to speak on this a little bit. And I do appreciate, uh, with Board Member Owens stated about, let's get the professionals involved. Paula Hancock, Knox County, speaking as an individual. The third grade retention law, or what we call TCA 49-6-3115, that has been put forth in its current form, is oppressive and rooted in negative consequences resulting from the measure of a single data point based upon high-stakes testing. As it stands, it humiliates and denigrates our third graders by retaining them instead of putting forth assessment strategies and systems to propel them forward. We, the adults, leaders in education and educators, should have the freedom locally to be able to utilize multiple sources and kinds of evidence of students' learning to contribute to decisions on student promotion, retention, and course grades. We should be able to and have the freedom locally to decouple federally mandated statewide student assessments from high-stakes consequences for students, schools, and educators to help ensure that no measure should be used to determine a student's performance or access to supports and opportunities. I believe as an educator for over 25 years, that we must employ quality assessment practices that generate accurate, useful evidence of student learning to support instruction and student's success. As an educator, we know that individual students deserve learning opportunities that are differentiated and responsive to their needs, interests, and learning styles. How we assess students should reflect these priorities and be designed by educators, the professionals, in partnership with stakeholders to allow all students to demonstrate the full breadth of their knowledge and skills. Each one of our children, our students, are unique and wonderfully made. And every student, regardless of where they come from, what they look like, or where they live, deserves access to a great and excellent public school education that will empower them to achieve their dreams. I am asking our board to be encouraged to support and ask our legislators to amend Tennessee Code Annotated 49-6-3115 and support for student promotion and retention decisions to be based on a combination of evidence from a variety of sources. Set at liberty our third and fourth graders so they will have the freedom to learn. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the least of these.
Thank you. Angel Jones, please state your name and county of residence and you have three minutes.
Angel Jones, Knox County, Tennessee. I appreciate all the work that everybody has put into talking about the third grade retention resolution. I think that it's imperative that we get something together that does get passed by all of our board members or by the majority on Wednesday, because I think that by making a statement to the rest of our state, is, to the rest, to our legislators and joining the rest of everybody else, is a huge thing, because there is a lot that's already been speaking out about it. And I think we need to speak out about it as well. And if I could, could I say something about the playground thing as well? If that's okay. Okay. I also just want to say that play and childhood imagination is incredibly important for development. And I also think that the school board should absolutely be funding these, these playgrounds and not just the communities. And I commend those for speaking out about the blatantly obvious disparities shown in putting what that funding has done onto our schools, or now onto our communities. Thank you.
Thanks. Lance McLeod?
Lance McCold, Knox County. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for letting us. Um, I wanted to mostly talk about, um, item 9D, um, but I wanted to say a word first about, um, this policy B140, about the, um, policy, the, the agenda setting meeting. Um, in the last six months, there's been a member of the public at almost every single one of those. Those are valuable to the people, the members of the community so that we understand things. Often we learn things at those meetings that we don't learn at these meetings. So I would encourage you to, to retain public notice, cause that's the only way we're going to find out about it. So now, let me say about, um, this, uh, it's the team for the, um, charter review committee. Um, I, I was putting myself in your shoes and I was saying, dang, the administration doesn't respect you. Because they gave you this list of names with no reasons why these people were picked, no evidence that they were the best people. Um, the staff members, I'm just really looking at the three community members, because like, who in the heck are those people? Do those people show up at board meetings? Do those people show any evidence? Um, and there was no evidence, nothing given in what the administration gave you about why these people are the right people to serve on this committee. I did a little research to look them up, and I still can't find why they are the right people to serve on this committee to look at these charter applications. So, um, but, but it just, it sort of hit me is like, this happens so often, so often the administration just throws you something with not a sufficient amount of information to do it. They say, trust me. Well, I follow President Reagan, who said, trust and verify. Your job as school board members is to verify, not to do the superintendent's job, but to make sure he's doing the right job. And if you don't know who he's putting on these committees, you aren't doing any verification. So I would urge you to demand more respect from the administration and say, you know, you want me to approve this, this list? You want me to approve something? Give me the reasons why that's the thing to do it, instead of just putting it out there. So, thank you for the work you do. Good evening.
Thank you. That concludes public forum, Madam Chair.
Before we move to board forum, Dr. Ryswick, during break, I think you said something about that second charter application. I just, I didn't know if you wanted to clarify that that just like came through today?
No, I appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. I was, I was unaware that we had received it as well. So I think it was one of those that was kind of postmarked today and came through the front office, as I learned during our break. So.
Because today was the deadline.
Right. I think today was the deadline. Thank you.
So moving on to board forum, Ms. Decker?
I just wanted to say, I hope that all the students finish the fall semester well and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Reverend Butler?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was just remarking to someone that, uh, this was, uh, about 95 days in of me being on the board. And we've had a lot of discussion about so many important things. Uh, but I do not want to lose sight that in District One, we still have three schools, uh, four schools that are on the state list, uh, the highest priorities or the lowest performing. And that we also have to be thinking, I think about it every day, of what we're going to do to make sure that our kids, all of our kids in Knox County are getting the best education. But those in District One, these, the needs that we have... getting the best education. But those in District One, these, the needs that we have will be addressed. So I don't want to lose sight of that as we talk about so many other things. And all of these things are important and were important. But that is something that I think we have to make sure that we understand. It's not a District One issue, and it's not a District One problem. It's a Knox County issue and a Knox County problem, or Knox County concern, a Knox County challenge, a Knox County opportunity. So I'd be looking forward to more discussion about what we can do as a whole to help this part of our district that we know needs to be addressed. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you, Ms. Owen. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to give two little shout-outs. One is for the Bearden High School soccer team. I mean, pretty impressive, being number one in the nation, right? I mean, that's no joke. So undefeated for two straight seasons, is that right? Yeah, so pretty, pretty impressive there. And also, don't want to steal Ms. Spike's thunder, but I know it's in her district, but I did get to go to the game because my kids go to school there. Got to see the West Championship game in Chattanooga on Friday. And, I mean, 15-0, and, I mean, really, every game, they've looked unstoppable. It's been kind of crazy. I mean, they just went nuts. So I know that the coach there and the, the team, they're, they're reveling, and they should, because they did a great job. So.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give a shout-out to the Harden Valley Middle School Chorus. Last Friday, they went in Christmas carol around City County Building, and they did a tremendous job. And they have a fantastic teacher. And I know we focus a lot, high schools do such amazing things, and middle school kids are, you know, those are kind of the in-between forgotten years. So they did such a fantastic job. And I just want to echo Sweet Grace and, you know, wish all the students and teachers and families a amazing holiday break and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Spike.
Thank you. I've been in a lot of meetings in my lifetime, and I just want to say how much I appreciate the conversation that we've had tonight and have been having, and having hard conversations, but connecting and figuring out what each other wants. It's, it's been pretty amazing to be a part of that. I also want to congratulate West High School on their undefeated season. It's been pretty cool to watch it and see, like, is it going to keep going? And I'm so proud of them.
Ms. Horn?
I'll just give a shout-out to the Fairgood High School dance team. They won a national title again, I think, for the second year in a row. So congratulations to them.
Congratulations, Mr. Triplett. All right. So with that, we are adjourned.